Yeah, you can only bend it very so often that it breaks any out.
Would you want to make it from?
Forty of them.
That's, that's crap.
He has one yet.
I mean, it's longer than that fourteen foot length.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think he said that's fourteen.
Yeah, better like.
You know, right on the lake or just the list.
That's been reservoirs right behind their house. There's like twenty five minutes.
So you always got pictures of big crap pieces like.
Come on.
I don't know.
Keep crimpers. Right, draw like hoses.
I can say I was from my hair if you want to buy me too.
Thirty-five hundred pound one.
I've seen this letter I got in mail. That I left your message about. I didn't know if you and Donnie lost. Or if you got one.
No, I don't get nothing. I don't want one.
I don't know who got the letter. There was no return address, no number. But I thought you made.
Yeah.
In case you get any calls.
I got your message. I didn't hear the phone ring. So then I called Donnie. This is what.
That's what it's about. I think so.
Thank you. Stand and do the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic through which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice. Thank you. Public discussion. You were in here first.
Oh, I am just wondering, and I probably don't have to come back to work or whatever. Get on the agenda with everybody. I have taken the death investigator. Of course, took it back in July. I know Phil has been busy in this and that and everything that's reported. This and that. It's something that I am interested in partaking, helping out with the county. Not looking though that there's people as much as you guys have, but I'm willing to become a floating. So I hope that makes it for one discussion at later time, but I'd just like to take note that I am very interested in helping.
Good.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
Anybody else here in public discussion? If not, do I have a motion to approve the agenda minutes dated October twenty fifth?
Yes.
That's next.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda minutes.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the minister agenda? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Very unanimous. Next, we have discussion, decision, review and approval of the claims.
Sure, so this will summon two hundred dollars for training. Do you have any pitch anymore? Is it world or one?
He doesn't. That was, that would be, is he Marion County now? I know he was up here for some stuff. I saw that on Facebook. He was up here. He was up here doing training.
Oh. He was actually. Okay. Also, he was an instructor.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I never talked to Roger about the system, but I did see it on Facebook and he was the one giving the training.
Yes, sir. It's three ninety-three twelve remain. Is that one room or two rooms?
Two rooms. I checked that. I checked back too because I saw that. It was thirty-two D N.
Look at it.
We didn't have any.
Yeah. I thought I put him there. Oh, yeah. Put there, yeah.
And the other thing I was questioning about was that attorney bill for the assessors in that state line that I talked to Judy about it. And that should be it. That's over now. And we don't have to write him a check back. It's going to be applied to their next court, their next taxes statement.
I had a question about the pressure washer to the engineer's department. With the, I'm assuming it's a new one. I don't really know anything about it. I don't remember approving anything like that in here. But the grand total is just shy of eleven thousand. It's ten seven forty-two eighty cents. Our prior approval is five thousand that we do at the beginning of the year, so.
Have to deal with my bill. That's your.
It says October.
It's red. I guess I just assume it's hot. It's usually hot. See the red ones.
Yeah, I, I don't know, but we have a couple of thousand dollar bill here now.
Want us all Doug and have him explain it or?
I mean, we could, but it's more of a policy thing because he's always thought he doesn't apply to that. And I went back to the minutes to find the language and it says, approve the spending limit for any one item of five thousand dollars for elected officials and department head prior authorization. Need it at the dollar amount above five thousand.
Dial, dog, dog. Have him come up.
One item would be, I mean, should.
Hey Doug, did the board say question on your solar washer?
This would be different.
And I'm not saying we wouldn't approve it, but it should be, should follow the procedure. And these, Tammy, these are all the same what's on the computer, right?
I, I don't know if those are on the computer.
Oh, these are not?
Those are credit cards. Those are credit cards, so.
The credit card ones are not.
The dollar.
Yeah, but individuals do not let it. I have a question for you.
Yeah, I see a new pressure washer, I'm assuming, and Phil's here.
Okay.
It's almost eleven thousand dollars total, but that's why I'm asking about it.
Yeah, we watered it, I guess.
Is that for certain shop or?
The mechanic shop we're converting over to LP burner.
Okay.
Asking, telling him why you're questioning.
Because the first meeting every year, we approve prior authorization for elected officials and department heads. And, and the language in the minutes is to approve spending limit for any one item of five thousand dollars for elected officials and department heads. Prior authorization from the board needed if the dollar amount's above five thousand. That's, that's why I'm asking.
That was for urgency FEMA, wasn't it?
No, that's an every year deal.
So I guess we've had these discussions before, but it's difficult for the road department to operate that. There are times where we might have to decide some sort of a repair on equipment. I've never been questioned. We've had a question one time when they were talking about FEMA events. And that resolution or some sort like that.
This might be a part, would it?
No.
And I'm not saying we wouldn't buy it.
Well, we gotta replace, we gotta replace things with her. Start to be prepared.
Yeah, but we have to get new software for computers. We have to fly the county every three years. All that stuff gets approved. Just following the policy and same procedure for everyone, so.
I, I'm tasked with construction, maintenance and operation of the secondary road department. I have fledge it that I follow, tab. And things are needed, we have to purchase them.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Becker?
Yeah, I mean, it wasn't, wasn't necessarily a question for Doug. It was as much for the board as Doug.
Any more discussion?
Well, you know, that is a policy, but maybe for the engineer, we're going to have to make exception due to the policy and, and make it a higher limit or something because just when in order, a, a load of rock doesn't cost five, cost five thousand dollars, but the whole bill is over five thousand dollars. How, how, I mean, how do you want to do that? Or?
Yeah, I mean, and it says, it says one item, so I don't, I don't know that rock would qualify under that.
Well, repairs would. You'd have a lot of repairs over five thousand.
Repairs could, yeah.
It's a repair. He's got to get the stuff wrong.
But this, and that's, I mean, we had big repair bills before and I didn't bring any of them up. This is something that I'm sure has been planned for a while. It just didn't come to the boardroom. I didn't know anything about it until it was under bills.
You want to do something, then you're going to have to have an action and have it on, make a request to have it put on the agenda.
To review that policy or what?
That's what we're talking about.
Okay, I mean, you want a motion to review that?
No, you can request to have it put on the agenda.
Okay, can, I would like to have that on our next meeting's agenda.
No big ticket items, Doug, like you ask us to be invited semi, you ask us to invite him or all that stuff. Always the next one on that stuff.
Any more discussion on the claim? Do I have a motion to approve the claims?
Still moved.
Motion by Casey. Second by. Second it. Any more discussion on the claims? Do a roll call vote, please.
Stacker.
I'm going to abstain.
Casey.
Yes.
Pla.
Yes.
Pla.
Yes.
Starks.
Yes. You want to come down? I just pointed to the. Yeah, do the resolution, resolution number. You're up, Nick.
Okay, well, as we, we did our budgets last time, we, we were going to have someone retiring and, and she did, so we're, I need to have a deputy in my tax department, so. I stepped up and said she would be willing to do that, so. Think, was it Roger Swerzer?
With that, do I have a motion to approve Connie Ludwig as deputy treasurer for the tax department? And the resolution number is eleven, one, twenty-two, oh, one.
Still moved.
Motion by Stacker, second by. Pla. Roll call vote, please.
Stacker.
Yes.
Casey.
Yes.
Pla.
Yes.
Pla.
Yes.
Starks.
Yes.
Yeah, for me, I'll let you read it.
All right, thank you.
I, Connie Ludwig, solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
I, Connie Ludwig, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability, discharge all the duties as Deputy Treasurer of the county as of now and hereafter, as required by law.
And that I will faithfully and partially, to the best of my ability, just discharge all the duties Deputy Treasurer and the county pursuant as now or hereafter, as required by law.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Last one, last one.
I don't know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ready? Uh, discussion to change E A P providers.
That's all from Isaac. Last week, and Isaac is switching E A P providers. Thank you have the information in your packets. But they are going to be switching and right now we piggyback off of Isaac, so we don't contract with them, but we, we piggyback off of what they do. It will be a cost increase, a little bit higher, twenty dollars and forty cents a year per employee. They're changing because right now E F R isn't giving what they feel that their employees deserve, that they're not advertising and, and making available some of the stuff that they think they're paying for. So they are switching over and wanting to know if we want to switch or if we want to stay with E F R. If we stay with E F R, we're on our own. I.
Do you want to tell, I guess, tell people what?
Oh, sure, so. And Donna can probably explain it a little bit better than I can because she deals with it, but there are services like.
I mean, what the, what the, they stand for.
Yeah. E F R is. Employee. Sorry, I'm going to go to this, but I shouldn't know my answer. E U P is, is employee assisted.
Employee assistance program. And E F R now offers six sessions. I think the program indicating that two sessions, but incident. Our utilization has been pretty low, quite honestly, but I think it's the new program, I think we'll do some more, we will offer some services that could maybe approach the needs of your home. It will help, but that's just the culture we're in, so that's probably one of the.
In the email that they sent, they mentioned we've only had one person utilize it in the last year. And that's kind of their concern and why they're switching is we're paying for the service that nobody's using because they're not marketing it and making employees aware of what services they have to offer. So the new company is a little bit more proactive, so employees would know what they have to offer, maybe utilize some of the services. So. I, I recommend switching and following Isaac's lead. That's going to be.
Do I have a motion to approve care grid? Services for worker?
I would make that motion.
Stacker, second by.
I'll second it.
Second by LaS. Any more discussion?
And that'll be a January first, twenty twenty-three start date for that.
You know that.
We pay quarterly, and honestly, we just get the bill because Isaac handles it, but I would assume I just got offered last quarter's.
In the email, it says January first.
It said we find it easier to roll this out with our wellness program in January. That could be your change. Yeah.
Yes.
Any more discussion on the topic? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried unanimous. Dan, we're after Veterans Affairs.
Morning. First, I just want to thank the board and Amy for the assistance on the handicap doors over at the annex. They're installed yesterday. It's working beautifully, much needed condition, very much appreciated. So just wanted to convey that. Wanted to share with the board consideration for providing a resolution to the county for Operation Greenlight. Operation Greenlight is a program that was, the concept was developed by the National Association of County Veteran Service Officers, which should be my national headquarters in conjunction with the Association of Counties. And what it conveys is the week of November, Veterans Day, the seventh through the thirteenth, simply lighting a green light in a place of business or the home to show the support for veterans who have served in the county, who have sacrificed in, as a result of their service for the county in a show of support. It's kind of a challenge for some veterans every year about this time you get into the holiday season. It's, it can be a rough time for a veteran and, and in particular their families, especially those that are serving overseas and are gone from home. Having spoken to that myself, it's not the same when you're seven thousand miles from home in a combat zone and people are coming together for Thanksgiving and Christmas and that sort of thing. So what I'm asking the board is to consider the resolution I had provided as a template to adopt for the county and see if we couldn't get that out there. And of course, if it is approved, I would go ahead and coordinate with the radio and newspaper and get those articles in there as well. Did you have an opportunity to re, review the attachments?
Yes. Anybody else have any questions on the attachments?
Mr. Chairman.
Is it a resolution or proclamation?
Proclamation.
Okay, sorry.
I came up with a draft. I didn't know if you had to sign.
Do I have a motion to support the green light program for veterans in Kusuth County?
Still moved.
I have a motion by Casey, second by Pla. Any discussion, any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried unanimous.
Then Tammy, would it be okay to make you see if any of this could sign this? I would appreciate that. Gentlemen, that's all I have. Thank you very much for your time.
Really thank you. Thanks for bringing this to us.
This is, yeah. Thank you.
Yes.
Next, we have Summit Carbon Solutions Project, motion to intervene. We'd like to lead off on that.
To your top.
December thirteenth, the I U V will be hearing oral arguments just with safety jurisdiction of some pipeline. I encourage Kusuth County to file to intervene. Proceedings will be held to allow interested parties to provide input on the relationship between the findings that I U V must make in regard to the location of the pipeline, local land use and individual property as compared to safety issues. You file to intervene, your attorney will get to represent Kusuth County's ability to set safety standards in our county and have a say in the location of the pipeline if the I U V grants. Local ordinance can set safety distance, residences, livestock, school, hospitals, et cetera, and other requirements that will public and public and local officials be necessary in a form. Intervening is not arguing against the I U V. There'll be your opportunity to have a say in why you want a local. This is your only chance to make this argument directly to the chance to fight for the safety of your community. Things that should be worth the cost of a living. Fortunately, counties and landlords have this position, having to spend time and money to fight something. Didn't initiate or anyone who wishes to bring no arguments about recent by November. We have the option of hiring the same attorney. Don't be comedy house. I don't. Off the timeline or not. Okay, all right.
It makes sense.
I, I called him. He wouldn't give me any information on options.
Yeah, I can find that out, but it makes sense, but it's not the intent is.
I, I know.
Got your thoughts?
Well, you know, the, the I think that it's, it's an opportunity for the county to present an argument. I could probably really board search and said, you know, and whether you want that to come from a united front, somebody who's already spent a considerable amount of time on it. This Mr. Whipple also makes sense if the county wants to go with it. I did speak with Doug a while back, and I don't know how involved this attorney is with Shelby County. I assume that he's helping with the ordinance also. Relationship between the ordinance and the zoning is quite intensive. And given that there's this opportunity to somewhat joint force this. Last time I was up here on this topic, the board had decided to wait to see what ISAC came out with as far as the survey. And I think the reason for that was it makes more sense to have more of a united front or of a common argument than have ninety-nine individuals. That seems to me to be the best approach if the board would want to go that route. I certainly can shout to Mr. Whipple. Mr. Whipple to that connection. Obviously, that point on you would be a, as a board, client. Client. But I certainly feel that kind of fact, I know. That will probably bridge the gap between supervisors. But it's up to you, I mean.
I guess my concern is we're gonna hire an attorney. Is it a blank check?
Well, you also have to look at it from the standpoint that he's already gone through most all of the motions to get Shelby County to sound. So it really would not be um, as intensive for the in my opinion. But, uh, that I don't know. Uh, those conversations, I can't speak on his behalf. Uh, I don't know how much it would cost. Uh, I don't believe it would be a blank check, obviously, with the efforts. Coordinated efforts toward Kusuth County. Which I assume is going. This is an assumption that similarly in which we're at Shelby County.
It's gonna affect zoning, Doug, and you have any opinions on any of it?
Um, this is all legal. You're, you're talking about motion to intervene. I had no idea. No, I was probably just about your. Yeah, yeah, actually. I I really had no.
Yeah, and that was, that was talked about very extensively down at ISAC, the, the connection between the ordinance and zoning. And on October fourteenth, we got an email from ISAC with an update on the petition to intervene and they, their executive board had met September thirtieth to review the results and discuss further board moves forward with the petition to intervene related to the issue of eminent domain. And then it says, following a meeting with outside legal counsel during which concerns were raised with the eminent domain argument and high costs associated, the board met again on October eleventh and rescinded the decision to intervene. So ISAC's not doing anything. Um, legally, they said they would push for legislative involvement instead, but if we don't have that as an option, it would be up to us to do anything on our own and that could get expensive. I'd be concerned about that.
Do we do it? Intervene? I've got a motion.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
I have a motion, Casey?
To what Nancy told us, the person's name and everything, what Nancy Erickson just related to us. I'd motion to go forward with that.
I have motion on the floor.
For any dollar amount or anything like that? Have you talked to him at all?
Have you?
I haven't.
Matt, do you know that amount?
Oh, that won't be.
Delayed would be.
You won't give it up, huh?
You're, you're on the file for the motion to intervene and actually have Todd or the chair can give that, get that information. Yes, I can accept it. Yeah, or you can, I mean, I can go downstairs to make the, the, the call and see if I have the opportunity to talk to him today. Maybe table it to Tuesday.
Well, maybe Tuesday.
I'll go, I hope that's. I see that.
Election, Dan.
That's.
Yeah, it tends to deadlines, so if we go ahead and do it, and like Matt said, we could always back it out later if it's a bad price.
But then do we need a dollar figure of not to exceed a certain?
I think we do for now. Just, I mean, we can always raise it, I think, dollar amount.
What you have in mind?
Just, I'd say just go ahead and do it and find out what it's gonna cost and then they can, like I said, we think it's way too high.
But we can't make that decision. If we approve it, that decision would have to be made.
Then we have to have a board meeting to have that decision to put a limit on it, so I'd rather have you come up with a arbitrary figure.
Yeah.
Feeling for that much, you just want to.
Would it be all right if we postpone the decision until, see if Todd can make a connection with him?
Well, we have a November tenth.
Deadline.
What, you mean till later on in the meeting?
Yeah.
I think he's talking later on in the meeting.
Sure.
Yeah.
You think you could try and.
On the table till later on in the meeting, you could run down there and see if I can hold them.
I think it'd be advantageous.
For though, so.
Do you want to withdraw your motion until we?
Overgrown motion to talk is a dollar amount.
Yeah, I think everybody'd be more comfortable with the dollar amount.
At least to start with, we got straight to the value, I guess.
Thanks, Todd.
I didn't do a write a blank check, very.
Well. We'll just further on in our agenda. And anything else on the subject?
I'll talk to us.
Okay. Navigator Pipeline Project Update.
Got a few handouts here, so. With me?
I introduce myself, uh, while Lady is getting supplemental materials handed out. So I'm not stretching around. Uh, my name's Elizabeth Burns Thompson. Um, I, I work for Catvieters CO two. Um, I mean, I actually grew up on, on a farm in the eastern part of the state, uh, so I come at this project through the lens of what actually means for agriculture, uh, and largely our, our rural process or specifically the ethanol facility that you all have in the county. Um, we've got for here with the, the client. So we pass a specific question about the facility and then direct in his. Part of our back to our. Um, Lady is handing out a bunch of information, uh, to you, as some of you have, um, may have had the opportunity to see some of these materials already. Um, all that's being handed out for your background is, is publicly available. It's either part of our IUV application that we put forward um, on Tuesday of last week or, uh, is already on the project or has been, I should say, on our project website. So uh, a number of materials, we, we've got the, the high level countywide map. Behind that is individual kind of segments in a more stubbed out fashion, um, of the Kusuth County footprint. Um, again, that was it with exhibit B, which was the non-IUV filing, uh, early last week. So you can see a more still down perspective of the intended footprint in the county. Um, additionally, uh, there is a packet, a bigger packet, uh, that's the the IUV presentation. So that same budget that we utilized at each of the informational meetings that we did with these donors early on. And so, uh, that really gives a, a pretty broad ranging update and overview of how kind of the project from the background about the team, the drivers of, of what's stimulating this activity, uh, environmental restoration type, uh, particulars, uh, technicals, specific safety, things like that. Um, we also know that we continue to get a lot of questions about, uh, how this, this type of infrastructure compares to other pipelines, specifically as it relates to safety. So there's two other things, um, that, that Lady continues to hand out here, um, as it relates to safety. Uh, one of them is, is kind of informational, um, flyer sorts that talks through specifically some of those safety parameters. Uh, the other thing is, um, I admit it can be a little bit hard to read just because of the size of the text. Um, and, and we can, we can get to a blow, more blown up version of this. I wanted to get you the exact version that was part of the IUV filings and they put all that on one page. So that's why that chart is a little bit difficult to read. But what that I think, um, does a very good thing to, to, to showcase is it outlines kind of line by line what is within, uh, the FEMSA, so part one ninety-five, uh, stipulations. FEMSA being the federal regulator, um, that has pretty much sole oversight over safety of pipeline infrastructure all across the country. CO two falls within that scope. And so what we've done is broken down kind of line by line what that looks like. And then next to that, specifically what we've gotten from a design, um, and operational perspective under each of those stipulations where we plan to meet and then it makes a big scheme. Um. I'm happy to, I, 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 I don't do a whole lot of these structured covers or, uh, presentations. I think the most benefit is probably, uh, dialogue, uh, where any folks might have questions about where we're at, um, in the process and, and, and things specifically hyperlocal to the county. Uh, again, we have about fifteen miles of, of footprint here in Kusuth, uh, with one of our, our shippers being, I was just playing, uh, fair in Lakota. One unique thing I would say about, uh, Lakota that's probably different than some of, shouldn't say some of, than any of our plants across our, our footprint holistically is, is Lakota is actually one of the few that actually is capturing a portion of their CO two currently, um, and, and holding on site that is being shipped, uh, exclusively by truck. Uh, those trucks look very similar to kind of having shipped an micro, right, the bullet trucks of sorts where it's, uh, compressed as well as refrigerated. So it's staying in a liquid as it's moving up and down our roadways right now. What at essence we're looking to do with this infrastructure is allow that to continue to happen, but in a much more efficient and in a safer fashion. Right? Right now, all that stuff is moving down our roadways. Um, there's going to continue to be a need for CO two to be managed appropriately and properly. Be it, uh, reducing how much is released in the atmosphere, uh, but additionally, we utilize CO two, um, as is the case of, of why plants are capturing some of it right now. Um, some of those, those benefits are, are in large industries that are important to many of us in the Midwest too. Or in sample, you know, livestock processing, um, specifically in the hog sector, right? They utilize a lot of CO two as, as part of processing, um, and other food and beverage type, like, um, industry cases. So what we're looking at is, is, is again, building out a piece of infrastructure that provides that level of connectivity, very similar to the connectivity that we look for in natural gas, common carrier infrastructures, crude common carrier infrastructures, anything like that. We're looking at building out that type of connectedness, um, just for kind of the next commodity that's coming to market. So with that, I, I'm happy to walk through any level of detail, um. And but one more thing I wanted to highlight, just in light of the conversation that was just had in relation to intervention and county zonings and, and who has scope over what. Um, the, there, there is a lot of conversation about, uh, who, who, who does what and who has what role. Um, I mentioned FEMSA, so, so the U, US Department of Transportation has safety oversight on over pretty much every means of transport, pipelines, obviously being one of those. Um, we also then have in Iowa, the, the state siding entity being that house within utilities board. Uh, we absolutely recognize that there, there are, you know, county level stipulations and concerns. Um, we want to work collaboratively, collaboratively, excuse me, uh, with you if it, to try to address those concerns. So as you're looking through that chart, um, as it relates to, to kind of FEMSA oversight from a safety perspective, as you're looking through the stipulations that IUV looks like from a siding perspective, what we'd like to do is be able to sit down with you and say, is there something that from Kusuth County's perspective that is being missed there and, and can we collaborate, look at a way of structuring that? Um, we're, we're open to that conversation. Uh, we, we, we don't want to be, uh, an us versus them, uh, type of mentality. We truly want to be good neighbors and partners. And so we, we, we want to uh, put on a olive branch to, to have that conversation, um, before it has to go into, you know, litigation or, or anything like that. So I know that a, a lot of different tracks and there's, this is relatively new for a lot of folks that know that want to make sure that that's, that's some of the collaborative action, especially from our project's perspective. So with that, I do also have a couple of members from my team. Obviously, many of you know, Lady, um, he's kind of my, my local eyes and ears, uh, so I can't be everywhere all of the time. Um, perfect plant, uh, guys from our, uh, permitting and outreach, uh, teams that are working directly with landowners and doing some of the local level kind of siding permits as well. Um, so with that, I have talked a lot. Um, to the meeting, so if you let me know, uh, how you'd like to do kind of Q and A or what level of detail you'd like to hear more.
Any questions?
Yes. Damage prevention tape installed two foot above pipe on?
Yep.
So you lay the pipe and then you put two foot of dirt on it and you lay the tape on?
Yep, so think of the, um, damage prevention, it's kind of a fancy word for saying those of us are committed to caution tape. Right? So think, think almost like police tape, caution tape, where we traditionally trench in the pipe. So where we we have longer answer, where we bore it in or close down the directional drill, we won't be able to put in the tape just because we're, we're not disrupting about that, right? The, the only disruptions on would be where we put in the pipe. But everywhere we would, where we would trench in the pipe, um, we'll put in that tape. So yeah, but the, the pipe is at least five foot, if not deeper. And then two feet above that, we'd effectively would lay in, um, think like bright red caution tape that says morning, pipeline below, stop digging, dah, 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 right?
It's not to prevent if you got a leak.
No, it is, it is truly to, it, it instances that if someone doesn't call eight one one and they're digging an area, that the hope is that you can counter that as well before you encounter, you know, the asset itself. That's, it's, it's one fail safe. There's a number of others that I'm happy to, to, to go through more detail.
All the contractors, you know, let them put that there. So the average guy digging up just a red piece of plastic or whatever.
Right, and that's why on, on, on that, we would mark, right, morning, pipeline below, right?
If you tear up little chunks, you can't read it. So I mean, you're gonna go ahead of time, this gets put in there and tell the contractors, if you see anything red, quit digging.
Yes, so, so outreach in that perspective will also have, uh, similar to existing pipelines where you have the field markers, right, on, on, you know, boundaries. Um, largely tile contractors should be calling eight one one. We know that's not always the case, but, um, that, that would be something.
They're not always correct. I know. Fiber optic got cut because they were like, uh, always off.
And that, and that's, and that's a part why you can have all the, the bells and whistles on something, but having something physically in place as well as that human element is critically important. So, so, um, the, the outreach directly to tile contractors is something that, that has not been brought up, and that's a, an incredible suggestion. We can certainly push that out through the drainage improvement, kind of association is probably a good place to start with that in addition to basically what you mess with like that, where you just make sure it's getting the right hands. The, the other thing, just, it, it just, I, I, I apologize for wanting to, but the other thing is part of that, um, you'll know on that, the, the handout that we talked about, uh, installing fiber as well. So we'll, we'll actually lay fiber on top of the pipe throughout the entire footprint. So that, that fiber not only can, can listen for leaks, but it also can sense vibrations. So it should be able to sense when something is coming close to the pipeline long before it gets there anyway. So we have a very specific area where we know excavating, excavation is, is beginning to get close, right? So we can hopefully intervene before you get to a point where you dig up the tape or interfere with the asset itself.
So in the fifteen miles of Kusuth County, how many valves will that be? Is, is there an industry standard that says you have to have a valve in so many miles?
Yep, yep. So, so a, a, and those are, so there is, there is a baseline minimum that is outlined by FEMSA. I would say in many cases, we're going to exceed that in large part because there's, there's a number of criteria outside of just basings, um, as far as that. So again, this is gonna be a little bit of a long answer, but the, the federal minimum is every twenty miles in areas that are not, um, high consequence areas, and that is a specifically defined term, um, by the feds. And in areas that are in a high consequence area, so think population centers, um, areas of gathering, things like that, uh, that minimum spacing goes down to seven and a half miles. There are other triggers that, that also trigger a, 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 about, um, locations. So edges of backer bodies, edges of railroads, um, kind of key things like that. We're, we're looking at the, the in addition to, uh, component pieces of that, which is why those dispersion models that you'll, you'll see notated when we talk about, right, looking at what does dispersion at any one point along the pipe look like? And then we can go in and, and over engineer, right? That's where we look at putting valves closer together. Um, so.
There's some more valves that's safer, that's safer, is right.
Well, so, so I think, um, in, in some instances, yes. So, so this is an analogy that, that I utilize in, in a handful of places, but i- if you think about kind of driving a car, there's not one particular thing that makes driving that car safe, right? One seatbelt helps make you safe, but if you were seventeen of them, the, the factor of safety does not completely increase with, with every additional seatbelt. Um, you also need to drive speed limit. You also need to write, there's, there's a number of factors. So it's not just valves, no different than it's not just setback distances, right? We do need to add a filter distance in areas, but that also looks different at different points along the line based on size, depth, right, the, the pressures, um, in the, in the proximity that it is to, to what it's around, but in addition to, you know, how it's engineered, the, the, the wall thickness, right? But valves is absolutely one piece of that pipe. It's not just, that is not the only thing that, that inadvertently makes it safe or not.
So the size of pipe, does that make it a difference in the distance of the valves?
Um, I don't believe so. Well, i- it will because it will ultimately, the, the, the size of the pipe dictates how much product is actually in the pipe as well as the pressure at that particular point in time. So that would have a function of ultimately what a dispersion would look like. And so thus, then, you know, the, the ultimate spacing that we would utilize in that area for, for the pipe. So there is not an easy way to say that de facto everywhere across that line that there would be a pipe every X distance because frankly, that would not be taking into account the unique kind of attributes of every inch or every mile of, of the landscape that we're crossing either. So it's, I can't try to give you a difficult answer, but it's trying to achieve the goal of, of safety is actually looking at a high mark local, not just a blanket application of, of the same thing everywhere.
How many PSI you run?
Um, it's gotta be at least, or above twelve hundred to stay in a liquid. Um, it'll be anywhere between thirteen hundred and twenty-one hundred. Uh, we'll test it up to twenty-seven five, uh, and hold that for eight hours with water long before we put any product in the line. There's, there is, and I can add to this, I'll just keep anticipating. There's two ways you can change gas into a liquid from a CO. There's two ways you can change gas into a liquid from a CO2 perspective. Refrigeration, right, so super cooling it or pressure. The way that you see it moving kind of on the roadways is a function of both, so they both refrigerate it to a certain factor as well as pressurizing it. We're opting for purely pressure because it allows us to warm it and get temperature. So you wouldn't have, you know, swaths of of cooling or warming going across the fields.
So definitely you're gonna keep it up?
Between about forty and eighty, I think, is what's indicated on the slide. It'll come out of the plant rather warm about hundred. But it does, you know, normalize to to ground temperature and that increased ground temperature, right? So or increased burial depth, so we're not, we're not at surface, we're we're five, six, eight people upgrade in many cases.
Talked to Lainey quite a bit, can you talk about this NAV nine one? Is that like a automated text system or how will that potentially work?
Yep, yep, so we envision it to be somewhat similar to the the amber alerts or severe weather alerts that that we get. Initially, that would be kind of auto programmed or auto loaded with with all of the requisite EMS folks that that would be part of both the footprint as well as, you know, many of us have mutual aid, right? We've got twenty eight agreements with neighboring counties, neighboring communities, maybe regional housing units of sorts. And so all of those individuals would be programmed in that system. And if there was an abnormality in the system, it would automatically send that 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 notice out to that that group of individuals. That would then be followed up by someone from our our operations center to say, hey, we responded and this is what we're able to determine. It just it it helps more make that more efficient of a notification.
How many easements do you have already in Cassous County? Do you have a percentage?
We are still pretty early, so so I understand that that is the question that everybody wants. We did just get started, remind me to be three months on app. So fortunately slash unfortunately, we we are just getting started, we haven't begun to sign folks. But we realized that we we did this on top, we started this right on top of harvest. And so when you think about you're crossing predominantly ag land, this is the one of the busiest times of the year for folks. So we're we're just kind of getting started, so the numbers are relatively low. We all started zero, we're no longer at zero, I can tell you that. But but it is, it's a total term, as with anything with with agriculture landowners, right? Many folks want to get to know who you are, what you're doing and why you're doing it long before they want to talk about the specifics of dollars and cents and easements. And so we're we're working on that right now, building those relationships. But but everyone should have seen, even if we haven't been able to sit down across the table with someone just yet. We we are mailing out the packets of information that that include that draft easement language as well as kind of a rough mockup of an offer. That that's kind of a starting point for those negotiations. Our goal was to at least have something in everyone's hands by the end of, now it's November first, the goal of the end of last month, and I think we're 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 darkens to that. What do you mean? What the percentages, I sir, I I obviously don't have that off the top of my head right now. And and it's it's, we actually look at these more from a construction spread is is how we're evaluating. So when our teams are 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 doing this, we're we're looking at it from about a hundred, dozen or twenty five segments at a time. So kind of that that functionality of breaking down from a county by county versus the constructions, right? Because the construction spreads are actually how we're breaking down our resources and our teams internally. So we're we're working to to figure out how to how to structure that reporting so that I so that I have county numbers as opposed to spread five has X percentage. Because that doesn't mean a whole lot in this county compared to Emmett compared to others, right?
You don't start at your source and go one way or the other?
In terms of.
Well, to me, you'd start at where you're gonna dump it in Illinois and work north.
No, so it's 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 a kind of, you you take a hundred or thirteen hundred miles and you break it up into about ten different segments or so. And then you kind of replicate, you have a a restoration crew or a landowner crew at all of those, you have a construction crew at all of those. So it allows you to kind of break it down and effectively construct the whole thing simultaneously in a shorter window of time. We think that also allows for a little bit more local influence or local participation in the project as well, right? If 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 that crew is only accountable for that hundred and twenty miles, you're more likely to get folks that that live and operate in that area too. Because they're able to go home at night, right? They're not having to come up from, you know, one part of the state and work another part of the state or another, you know, part of the country. In large part, you could pull from from the employment base there because they're a little bit more local in terms of their their focus.
That makes sense. So you start, okay, here's Illinois, here's where the end line is, so you're starting over here and you're going this way. So you're getting property, 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 paying all the money, then all of a sudden you got four miles here, nobody signs. You're done, if the domain don't come.
No.
How can you get through them?
It's 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 not a segment approach like that. We, sorry, I answered your question from a construction perspective. From an easement and outreach perspective, it is talking to everyone across the entire footprint all of the time. There is not a start it here and and work our way out, where we're working with everyone all the time across the entirety of that footprint. Yeah.
Well, you've been in the country, I heard about you. Your land agents, your land agents are out, I do hear that.
Yep, yep.
Any other questions for the navigator pipeline? Thank you.
Absolutely, if you have additional concerns or or questions, please, please don't hesitate to reach out. We'll we'll love to bring, again, some of our technical folks, some of our engineers again up here the early part of next year and and do some of that robust EMS outreach and training as well, the early part of twenty twenty three.
Keep in mind that we have more tile in Cassous County than just about any other where else in the world. So you're gonna have to deal with awful lot of tile lines.
So I'll just to clarify with this point too, but I I think it's important to note that, you know, while while landowners, and I'm fully aware of that, right? Like I I come at this, I want to add that, I constantly understand. When when a landowner gets a map from us, there are many places where they do see it across from from maybe corner to corner across a forty. When we're routing this, the technology and the way that we're looking at it is is is, I won't say blind, but we're not taking into account, right? Who a landowner is or who they are not, or, you know, making sure we're avoiding X person or that person. We're truly looking at it from a what is the safest routing perspective? And how do you then minimize the impact as part of that? Now, what that might mean is if, and this is figuratively, but say, you know, this is, this is my forty and it's proposed to cross across. Well, if there's a house here and I've got a machine shed here. But there's tile that run, it actually runs to a main, right? If you would prefer for us to follow a field boundary, that's absolutely something that we can take into account and have conversations about. However, we felt from a safety perspective, that's a that's a delineation or decision that you as a landowner should should make that value judgment, right? It's not on us to be able to say, well, we should route it down here because this is a barn and this is a house and, you know, that type of delineation. You as a landowner, those local folks, we felt that that's the most appropriate way to go about that. So so to say that a lot of the math is is an absolute done deal, I think is 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 maybe an overstatement. We are absolutely open to conversations, but there's, that that's a perfect instance where, you know, if if a landowner would like us to avoid impacts to tile, we can certainly do that in places. But from a from a routing perspective, that may put us closer to X facility or or Y. And that's a, that's a decision that we felt was most appropriate for them to make, not us, the company.
Because you're gonna run into some farms that have tile every forty feet, fifty feet. It's going to be a nightmare for you to cut through all those.
You're gonna trench it, you're not gonna pull it, are you?
We intend to trench it with the majority, yeah.
And I use fine local tile.
And and I think another thing that's important to know, you know, the from a from a restoration perspective of that. We can certainly do all of those repairs and and work with that landowner. Sometimes the best person to go and fix that tile is the person that probably would have been began with. And that allows us to also help soon in the local space as well. So if if that's a pathway, you know, that that a landowner would prefer to go about, we we want to have flexibility in the model to make sure that that they're comfortable with who's doing the work in addition to how the who the work is done.
You're gonna have a head contractor like the other one, having somebody come out of, I believe it's Minnesota, they're gonna oversee our tiles. Do you guys doing the same thing?
Um, we are working to build it to to bring in kind of a local subject, kind of a title expert, right? Because folks that know how to weld and strength pipe are not not generally the ones that that know kind of soil restoration nor that they know how tile systems work. And so I think that that's also a a key lesson learned of just the construction industry overall, that having a main pipeline contractor being in charge of everything is maybe not the best way to go about it. So that's also something that we're we're changing in our model, right? We're gonna contract directly with those that are doing the construction. We're also gonna direct contract with the restoration so that we have a better day-to-day oversight scope over those individuals that are doing that restoration work. But but yes, we'll we'll have pipeline experts. I'm not sure if we're, I think we're utilizing a different firm than than Ellenson that 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 Summit has retained. But but I think at the end of the day, the foundation goal from our perspective is is that we understand how important tile is. And you know your tile better than we do, and luckily, you and your tile contractor contractor probably know better than we do. So if that can be a local level perspective, then then yes, let's absolutely do that.
I did with a job a year ago that the fly-by-night come out of Des Moines and fix the tile. And they had it all screwed up, so to me, you ought to have a local boy because he lives there, his name's on there and his business is in jeopardy. So to me, forget the out-of-staters, they get the ones that are in Sioux County or right around Sioux County that do tile and will be your fixer, because their names on it.
I just wanted to make sure we've got flexibility in in how we are going about this proposal so that folks are comfortable with who they're doing business with. And frankly, from a local economic, same old ways lessons that way too.
Yeah, we had one contractor that drilled through a twenty-four inch tile for me a couple of years ago. He said, well, it didn't shoot water out. He hadn't, he couldn't figure out that it was draining instead of, he thought it was a pressure line that fed a water tower. Some contractors have no concept of tile. Any other questions? If not, thank you much for your updates, appreciate it. Yeah. We're gonna, we're gonna take a minute break here. Yeah, just a minute, we gotta go, Todd, did you get an answer? Yeah, then we'll go back to.
I can't believe with all that cool, seeing St. Jake kill. Still. Here's.
Well, after the capital of this CO2, I hear you're not even the options. Go back to, if you would.
Yeah. You got a little more truth than anything. Get your tiller job done?
What's that?
Get your tiller job done?
Oh, yeah. Started.
Boy, that stock's pretty nice this year. I hate to have a drought, but boy, they're not nice.
Everything was too easy.
The ground's hard though.
Oh, yeah.
Sitting that track and just rocks you asleep. Did yours gum you up there?
It's just bone dry.
Ours is, you know, we ain't had rain to throw off the aggressive plumps in it. Yeah.
I thought the DMI did a terrible job this year, didn't didn't boil anything up, you know, it just kind of rooted holes in the ground. The Tippin did a lot better and broke it up a lot.
My disc ripper ended up putting new discs on it, three inches long, they made a heck of a difference, scared stuff of. Did the gills roar up there?
I think ours is lower.
They're tipping, they're, them, DMIs, I know could turn them out. They got automatic reset, they got a chair beside them. What's the purpose? You don't need a chair bolt, you got the automatic reset. They're definitely very easy to pull. Lot of them out there, they got a lot of tibbons out there.
Yeah.
What's the sloughers like up there for water, in the bed? I know the pit, you could probably stand on the lot where the water is, and where it's supposed to be is about seven foot above.
By the way.
Yes, ma'am.
Navigator filed a request with I U B not to restore hard land. They don't have to put the ground back. Yeah, it was discussed at their meeting and I went out and looked at the I U B's, yeah. I thought you might want to know that. Oh.
That's terrible. Coffee. Said, oh, yeah.
As long as Jack's back, Todd, you got a second?
What is he, you mean, I'm like.
What's that?
It's like you asked.
Oh.
I'm like, uh.
You ready?
Donna knows that.
I didn't know what they were.
Let's, let's go back into session, Mr. Stecker.
After his words, I said, it's we have our employee and family resources.
We're back in session, Todd, you have an answer for us?
Yes, I spoke with Mr. Whipple and it indicated that currently he represents Shelby County, as we know, for both motion intervene and also preparing the ordinance. He also represents, and I wrote these down, someone that hates, but as I understand it, how Waldo Montgomery, Harrison Butler, and Remmer for the ordinance. And I think if I also understood him correctly, how Waldo was thinking about the motion intervene. And his his position was that if more counties do the motion intervene, then the cost will reduce. Well, obviously, the name's what they call. But there's also Harden, Wright County, I think their county attorney is doing motion intervene, but they're they're joining forces on that. So he already represents several of the several counties. And so, you know, he's familiar with it. And, you know, he had indicated that Shelby County and his thought process was that if you budgeted a hundred thousand dollars for the process, that that should be sufficient, that it'll probably be less if more of these counties join on. That's what Shelby County did. So looking at it from the standpoint of additional funding, he said there there's possibly federal funds available in Arco, whatever to assist in in those types of payments, but that's what he, that's what he suggested. And interestingly enough, he asked if we had both Navigator and Carbon Summit come through. I said, we did, and you want to know if if you're interested in that for Navigator too?
I would assume if you did one, you'd do the others.
And he indicated that, and maybe some of the representatives here that can answer to this. But he said the motion intervene may be sooner with Navigator because they filed an application or the permit block process.
Recently, yeah.
And then they filed a motion to waive the six week inspection to three weeks. He said that that's going to put a tremendous burden on inspectors to get that done in the three. So he said it may be something that the, even though the prod, the the process is going to be down the road further than Carbon Summit, the legal issues may be sooner than.
Roger.
She's smiling.
Yeah, so so we we did, we did include as part of our 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 permit application. Fortunately, they call it a waiver, we're not asking to waive the restoration standards. What we're asking for is a clarification to to achieve those goals just a little bit differently. And one of those is a timeline on the soil surveys, so it's part, there's really two buckets. So one of them is top soil surveys. You are required to do a survey on, assume this table is the right of way. You're required to do a survey on the far edge, far left side and the far right side, and then immediately in the center where it's being disrupted. Every five hundred feet and not only every five hundred feet, but then you also have to have two per parcel. What we're saying is that set or soil sampling on the edge of our right way where we have not done any disruption prior to. doesn't give a representative sample. If you survey or if you do those samples in the center, two in the center of that, you actually get a representative sample of that entire area more accurately than doing it the two on the edge and depend, having one in the middle that's, that's more impactful of the land actually impacted in the eastern area. What we also then said is within that, that area, that five hundred feet, we still wanna do over five hundred feet. There are areas where we don't have, we, we, we cross a very significant small section or quarter or actually technically terms, of, of an edge of either a quarter or a section, right? Such that you couldn't, you really almost couldn't get two full segments or two, um, cross sections, they call those soil, uh, soil survey cross sections, within that, that parcel. So where we would have contiguous parcels under similar landowners, if there was a small edge of one field and then a larger of another, that, that we look at those continuously and we do two within each of, within those collectively, as opposed to two in a very small piece and then two with a very large, maybe forty, right? Um, so looking at that from a bigger picture. On the survey, the, the soil survey timeline, what the, the code outlines is six weeks from when those surveys are taken, that then the, the county and landowners have six weeks to, uh, review those or evaluate before we can commence construction. What we're looking at is, is a pretty tight turnaround in terms of timelines. Um, we also think that with turnaround of, of information, that three weeks may actually be a bit more reasonable to allow for, you know, review to ensure that we're still capturing weather windows, um, to move forward with survey. Now, obviously, that, that's just a proposal, um, subject to I U B oversight. And that would only be subject to if, if we get to a point in the timeline where we, we, we need to, to look a little bit quicker at that, like soil surveys. We're not looking at trying to negate requirements. It's more or less having, re-reach those goals than actually when it's, it's more efficient. So we, we don't see that estimate, um, increasing the timeline from an intervention perspective. Um, we actually are quite a few months behind, um, different timelines, you should say, than, than Summit, in that we just filed last week. Uh, they filed their materials many, many months ago. So we, we, we don't have, neither company has really a, a, a timeline, um, at this point that I U B has outlined for periods and, and things like that. But, but I appreciate bringing that up and, and I should have brought that up in my comments before about the stipulations of that waiver that was part of it. Happy to, to answer questions.
Which is the, the point, I think, that I U B is going to be making a decision whether to cut it from six weeks to three weeks. And that's an opportunity to argue against that shortening of that time period. Uh, so, uh, yeah, and looking at it from the standpoint, he said, you know, that's, that's what, uh, he would suggest budget. You know, when you're looking at attorney fees, um, you know, regardless of what the issue is, it's, you always get criticized for giving the answer, it depends. Depends on what's unknown. You know, there's a lot of litigation that ensues after, you know, the motion intervene or after the ordinance is drafted and put in place and all of those things. Obviously, that increases the price. Um, but, you know, he was safe, uh, he felt that that was a safe number to suggest. Um, and that if more counties come in and, uh, join it, then it would be more of a cost sharing type of approach if you want.
There's about seven, eight counties that he's already representing that more likely are gonna do the intervention. If these are.
I think down six, um, only one so far has made the decision. I think these others are, are determining whether they want to, uh, also have it due to motion intervene. The county's name though, were, put the ordinance circle.
It's W I P P L E for the record.
It's W H I P P L E.
W H I, okay.
So does that, does that cover both then, or that's?
Covers both the ordinance and the intervention.
Does that cover both pipelines?
Yes. I, I caution you because it could be more than that, but you would certainly have, uh, an understanding at that point in time whether or not the cost is getting to a point where the county's deciding. Maybe it's too much, but that would be kind of like, if you go in and hire an attorney, uh, for litigation, usually you have to put down a budget. Now, you're not putting that money down as a retainer, but you're setting it aside for those types of expenses that come in. So it's, it's, it's analogous to, but only, only family, so.
But I'm gonna say we don't have that much in the budget for attorney fees and the supervisor's fund. So your suggestion, if we put a hundred ti- uh, give him a hundred thousand dollar limit, we'll have to do a budget amendment. Find it somewhere else.
When's this all gonna be done?
His, excuse me. His, um, thought was that there, there's a little bit of uncertainty as far as timeframe, but he thinks certainly by, uh, the end of the year, um, you know, you should have your ordinance in place. Motion intervening is gonna obviously happen at the I U B's schedule, uh, so that would probably happen sooner. Um, I'm not sure, Nancy, did you have the dates as far as the hearing that's, uh, is there a hearing set for that?
There is set for December thirtieth.
So, you know, obviously that would be here within the month of November. You know, his concern is they're going to start, um, there was also a proposal, not a proposal, that, uh, uh, the I U B was wanting to, uh, get, uh, procedures down, uh, get conferences set, uh, which then necessary parties to that are notified. Uh, and so once that order's in place, it kind of sets the hearing. And not to say that you couldn't intervene after that, but it may be a little bit more.
You said, is Hancock on there?
Uh, no. Not at the helm of us.
So if we do a motion to intervene, does we have?
Right, right is being done by, I mean, they did the motion intervene and Harden did the motion intervene. I think they did it with their county attorney. But they're joining forces, reaching out to them.
Because if we, so we got, they'll do our ordinance and intervene, but we have a different ordinance because we changed the numbers at this, the setbacks.
Well, yeah, and, and he would do the ordinance according to.
What we want.
What you want. The ordinance form, uh, has, he prepared, as I understand it, the Shelby County ordinance, which I think is in its, like, fourth or fifth draft. Um, but, um, what we had from the standpoint of building from that, obviously, you would just change whatever the county, pursuit county wants in those, um, situations. Also, you have to look at the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive, that's what it's called. Um, the comprehensive plan, uh, and how that relates to the setbacks and, and specifics that pursuit county wants in its ordinance. And that would be obviously dependent upon each county's comprehensive plan and what they want to have as far as protection. All safety of our citizens.
I know the proposal I put out there, Roger seconded me, that setbacks, two other counties that are pretty much gonna back us. We'd have three across that be adjoining with our setbacks. Otherwise, if we don't go with Whipple, can you do all that?
You know, about eighty percent of my job is prosecuting criminals in pursuit county, uh, you know, to throw something in that I'm completely blind on, uh, to be honest with you. It would be a hat. Not saying I can't do it, I always like a challenge, but looking at it from the standpoint of taking me away from what primarily I'm elected to do, uh, would be, um, you know, would really throw a, a little bit of a wrench in my office. Uh, and, you know, looking at that, um, you know, I don't know. We just don't have the staff and manpower to take on the project this day. I'll be honest with you. Um, you know, but I, like I said, I'll do whatever the board wants. But, uh, maybe the, maybe a little bit.
Roger, honest, that you said you can't handle it. I'd make the motion again that we hire Whipple to do the ordinance and the setback. You got a question for Todd yet? So Todd, say, say we decide to go with this, let me do the ordinance, we intervene. And just like the A T D ordinance, can't the state come out with their ordinance and supersede ours?
And I had a brief discussion with Mr. Whipple about that too. And in order to, uh, avoid that potential preemption, you wanna be in the process as early as you can. You know, that is a possibility, but, uh, there's no guarantees. I think, looking at it from the standpoint of what Mr. Stecker had indicated as far as Isaac, they want to, uh, promote, push towards legislative action. That could come, this year could come five years down the road. The A T D ordinance issue, how long were we dealing with that, uh, before the state stepped in?
Five years?
Yeah, so, you know, you're, you're dealing with a different times, uh, schedule down there, um, but that is a possibility. Essentially. Correct. You're not, you're not considered a necessary party to the argument. I think you can probably go down there and, you know, sure they have a discussion period or, or, or whatever, but I think being involved in that process provides more clout. That I don't, which I'm not sure Seaworth decides, I think that, uh.
I just have a hard time writing. Cause we don't have that much in our budget.
And I don't know if, if there are any funds other than tax dollars, R F O.
We got that pretty well spoken for, R F O.
Well, and I mean, Elizabeth mentioned it before there. I talked to Laney several times and stuff and they're trying to work with us without the legal process being the backbone, so. I know.
I see.
I, I think that we could do a motion to intervene and, and give the hiring Whipple a little bit of thought. Before we jump in, as you know, and many other counties are gonna get involved in it.
It's gotta be done with them.
I know.
Didn't what I mean, but is your care making rich deal what I could see?
Thank you. Hi, um, Phil, this is, I'm, I'm on the secondary route. I'm a, I'm a pitcher guy. I got nine patents and everything I see is in pictures and I understand it. Move back to our eight inch pipe here, it's screwed up. And I got to check it, and you take a pipe, it's seven, it's five inch, I mean, but you double it, it's four times volume. We would have no say, correct me if I speak. You know, and we don't have a part of this intervention dictating to you. Types, types of things. And you, can you imagine? Times with that picture was, I, I, I can't because we put it pretty close. Pat's got, we've got kids, got my granddaughter. And I'm sitting there going, what are we doing? You know, what are we doing to allow something? We got four minutes. I, I wear a seat pack at night. I don't even hear anything. I won't make it. My mother-in-law's next door. At fourteen minutes, it'd be a fast time for her. We can't start the vehicle. And, you know, if you have kids, don't you care? Don't you care about our kids? You know, I know, have people, I'll cut them safe off. So I, I know we're talking about money. What, what does this work? To us to, to stand up? And I think we need to do it. And, you know, I, I keep hearing, well, it's fifty-five percent. Well, no, you only use two thirds, the other third is still worth, you know, I got it. Let's just call it for what it is. See it for what it is. Let's push, we got some period going forward. And if we need to hear movement, find it. Let's at least position ourselves to represent ourselves. And I think that's what we're asking.
You're, you're basically asking that it not happen ever.
Well, let's at least give ourselves a fine chance. When they come back and we have no, no say, that, that's the worst part of it is, you know, you didn't intervene. They're gonna do what they're gonna do, but let's at least be in the game. I really feel it's important that not a million, a hundred thousand is money, but geez, I didn't put a price tag, you know, we, uh, the two developments next year. I, I can count four hundred people, five hundred people, families, this, that. We all know they're, they're hurrying up and streams are changing so they can deep this stuff in. I mean, do you even care? I don't care. Who does something like that? It threatens people. You know, and with all due respect, when you talk about a truck, a bullet truck, you got, only my pipe that's got two thousand psi, truck overturns a half mile away, it's a little different than the pipeline. Yes. It goes, you've got, what, fifteen miles, you gotta shut down the, in order to shut down a valve, you gotta shut compressors, this and that, it's game over. You know, I, I think we just need to see it for what it is. And I think this gives us the opportunity to at least be in the game. And I think if we don't do it, we don't make deadlines, we don't know what we're gonna do. We have to live. We got airmen goes over a place, say, a record three, three in one day. I think the guys said three or four, three. That's our healthcare. We, we don't take off. The power can drift out, maybe up to four miles. Our, our hospitals, our schools. I think we need to be at least on the forefront. Say, you know what, we're gonna be in the game, just in case. I, I think if we don't intervene, you're bringing it up. I think that's just too much.
I think there, there's one thing I wanted to clarify that, that on FISA, that, that, that we're somehow trying to get in to be grandfathering. That, that is not the case. That may be your, like, building codes, right? That, that, you know, you can, your lifeboat, you know, you're fine unless you try to pull it from it. That is not the case with pipelines. If and when there are any updates to help them to regulate from a federal perspective, we are required to update that mine. So there is no grandfathering in, there is no, you know, as long as we get in at a certain point that, that we exist under a different set of rules. Um, we, we have to bring it up too. If your rules change from safety perspective, we are required to bring that.
If you're gonna tear up the pipeline that you just put in and put in.
In any operational perspective, however, they would, would, if any, like, change how we operate? Yes, that, that you would have to go in and make those necessary updates. That, that happens right now with natural gas infrastructure. Any, yeah, you're responsible for the up maintenance and operations. That, that's the case.
For tearing up our lines again?
Sorry, I wanna be consistent in, in. Um, yes, but that's part of the permitting process and, and part of the basement is we are required to make landowners whole. Yes, I, I'm, it, from, from the entirety. So it's not just during construction, it's during maintenance. If there's anything that happens that we need to go in and, and, and do repairs to that mine or make a necessary upgrade, yes, we are required to make you as a landowner whole on any type of impacts required. And that exists right now in, in any infrastructure. This is also similar to older, like, natural gas lines. Um, they weren't historically pickable, so pipeline inspection tools. That was a requirement that came out from FISA that you had to bring your, your systems up to date so that those inspection tools can move through. That required a level of updates. That now happens today. And so that, that's an, an example that, that has taken place in another infrastructure today. That's the point I wanted to clarify.
Well, there, there was a comment made about the size of the pipe, and I don't know that we would have anything that we could do about that, no matter if we intervene or not. I don't, I don't think we could change that at all.
So that, that affects how much gas is sized to pipe though.
Yeah, but intervening, I don't, I don't think we could even bring that up as a topic. I mean, we can't change that. But I don't feel that'd be something we could even talk about there.
Ultimately, if you fail to intervene, you're at the backseat of the decision.
So we have a motion on the floor without a second. Your motion still stands, Mr. Casey, that you wanna hire Whipple to be the attorney and file a motion to intervene. Correct? And the ordinance? You want him to review our ordinance or?
If we're gonna pay him, it's, you get both at the same dollar, right? Our time?
Well, you can, yeah, I mean, you can, you can have, just do one or the other or both. I mean, that, that doesn't change.
It's the same money, right? And you said you don't have time. It'd be really hard for you to do it. So, yeah, I say do both.
Everybody understand the motion? Do I have a second to Mr. Casey's motion?
I'll second it.
I have a second by loss. Any discussion more than what we had already?
I guess. I wouldn't be opposed to filing a motion to intervene and having Todd do that and then doing some more research into the, the attorney and costs and stuff. But I'm not comfortable with it with what I know right now.
But then, so you just, you didn't have time?
Well, here's the thing, you know, the litigation, uh, legal action, any of those types of actions build on, on process. I mean, the initial process, obviously Harden County and Wright County, they have filed a motion to intervene. I mean, the initial process, obviously, Harton County and Wright County, they have filed a motion to intervene, county attorney. Um, the ordinance, um, are, well, then you go from that to, okay, you have the oral arguments or the argument from the IED. Uh, and, um, then any type of additional action that happens with the IED that requires additional time. Uh, you know, looking at it from the standpoint of, um. Any of these towns, including Harton, Wright, could, uh, join forces too, even though the county attorney started it down there. You know, so at least with the filing of the motion to intervene, uh, you would. Get your place at the table, so to speak. You know, then. As far as the arguments, uh, in front of the IED, I'm sure they're gonna be very similar. I'm sure there would be, uh, conjoining effort in trying to, um. Make some, or at least the arguments would be similar in the, the efforts then, because they're similar with the. So I, I don't necessarily think that the motion to intervene itself is a great amount of time involved in this. The great amount of time involved in this is formulating, uh, the arguments based upon the information in each county. And then from that point, I'm not really sure with the IED where that's going to go after the initial presentation of the arguments. Whether that's going to involve additional potential litigation, uh, additional, uh, time in front of the IED, additional briefs, additional motions. You know, that additional work after the motion to intervene is the uncertainty. Uh, and at that point in time though, at least you have your place at the table, as I mentioned before. If something then looks like this is going to be more involved, certainly, we can then at that point, um, question Mr. Whipple coming in. If you want to, uh, like I said, I'll do what the board wants and I'll get it done no matter what. Uh, I'm just saying it's, it's, um. You know, it's, there's only five of us in the office downstairs and so. So we can't. Sure our other duties, uh, to the county is probably safety. But. It's twenty-four hours in a day tonight. Most of them, so whatever the board wants. If you want me to do the motion to intervene, I'll do the motion to intervene. Uh, if, uh, you know, at that point in time, you make a decision or at least give you enough time to consider, uh, the expense that it would be to go with an outside attorney. Who obviously is educated in this subject. But that's, that's something that you certainly should do. I can do it, sure.
Okay, and it's your motion for both pipeline searches.
Just going. For both.
Go ahead.
Before you guys hold on this, I just wanna make this, uh, wish the five of you represent the entire county. And picture yourself with this thing going through your own backyard, have a voice.
Any other discussion?
I could make one say it quick and correct me if I'm wrong, but I mean, in the next couple of months. County's gonna be doing and adopting the budget for the coming year, so. I don't think anybody along the pipeline route. Gonna be opposed to their tax money going to protect them, having a voice down there.
I would make a motion as well, but I don't know if you wanna handle this one first or.
Yeah, this one first.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? I gotta, sorry, I gotta wrote down here. I have a motion, a second on the floor, any more discussion? Do a roll call vote, please.
I would say no for the current motion.
Casey?
Yes.
Los?
Yes.
Pla?
Yes.
Darks?
Uh, yes. Pushing carried, four to one. Anything else?
So, uh, uh, I will make contact with Mr. Whipple, the process now, obviously you made the motion. That doesn't necessarily guarantee, all right? More than likely, there's not going to be a problem, but every attorney when they hire a new client has to contract check. And so, you know, in my discussion, it didn't sound like there was going to be any potential conflict, I'm making notes up, but obviously it'd be. In a large firm in Des Moines and so they'll have to, to run through. Contract check. Uh, you then send, um, a, uh. Letter of representation. So that, an engagement letter, so that. You can have the contract form, so it outlines all of. Cost expenses, like you expect from. Uh, he'll probably wanna have a point of contact, uh. Would you, Mr. Darks, that he contacted?
Yeah, I, I think we should have a proposal.
Yes, well, I would recommend once we get that, you get to that point where he has the engagement letter in your hands, then probably put it on the agenda at that point in time so that he can. Discuss and ask the questions of him, uh, and you can get it from actually him as opposed to.
Have, have him send it to the auditor and copy me on it and then we'll.
More than likely, it'll be an email, I mean, most everything now is email, so it's. Saves time. I'll talk to him.
So will all that be accomplished then, in the timeframe? It says, didn't you say that was the tenth? Whatever.
Yeah, you made the motion, you made the motion to the court of representation, so the, once the, the email comes up. I assumed it would be, once you get the engagement letter, um, then that'll outline your expectations. Uh, I think at that point in time, you have, since you approved his hiring, the ability to tell him to go forward with the motion to intervene. Which could happen as early as the end of this week, I mean, it's. Motion to intervene is, is more than likely, uh, something that. Can be relatively quickly, but will not do until the engagement. I think that's, maybe that's, uh, a little more, um, optimistic, it could certainly be by the end of next week.
But, but it can't, it has to be done by the tenth though.
So, so do we need a full board meeting to sign that engagement letter?
Well, I, I presume that you hired him and all the engagement letter will do is explain, you know, right, his hourly fee, um. What expenses are going to be billed to the county, what expenses they made advance. Um, and looking at it from the standpoint of potential cost, litigation cost, those types of things, and then how billing will happen. Usually it's on a monthly timeframe, uh, so, yeah, I mean, that's all that more than likely the engagement letter will have in it. Uh, so I don't see that that would be a problem given your motion today to, to have that signed. Uh, obviously, you know, that's, uh, something that is, uh. Uncertain, just, I, I, I'll tell them also include these so I can kind of review it. Uh, but as far as going forward, I don't think that that would be necessarily the hindrance.
You made the motion to intervene, so I think you're gonna intervene.
Well, I, I was just asking the question because you had said that that. Whatever, letter, whatever, would be our opportunity to ask some of those questions and.
And here's, here's the, the other suggestion that I would have for the board. And once I made contact with him, then he's going to be able to talk to any one of you. And, and you can ask those questions of him directly, I think that's more appropriate. So you can educate yourself as far as what his intentions are. Whether the deadline is November tenth or not, uh, you know, all of those things can be ironed out individually. I think you would feel comfortable doing that. Otherwise, obviously, because litigation, um, which the motion to intervene would be considered, would be protected under, um. Would be protected under closed meetings, so you have those meetings with your attorney in closed session. But as far as those questions that are, is the deadline November tenth or how soon do we have to have this done? You know, those types of things, I think individually you can feel comfortable talking to. Again, I'm not trying to put words in his mouth, I did discuss that with him. But as the attorney, I think that that was representative of board, I think individual questions, um, are capable of being answered independently.
With that, do you wanna take a fifteen minute break?
Question on, just as it relates to ordinances again to the, I, I, I don't, I can't speak on behalf of Summit, but I know from a navigator perspective. We do wanna work collaboratively through the ordinance process and also be cognizant of minimizing cost to the county, so. However, you would like that process to work, um, we can certainly work through Mr. Whipple on that, if you'd like us to work directly with the staff. And the county or, or you guys' board members, um, again, we wanna be cognizant of, of, of cost impact, so if we wanna minimize those where, where possible. So if we can do that directly with county, we're certainly willing to, to have those conversations and, and work through kind of that conversation. I, I just wanna be cognizant of process, so. And maybe that's a further conversation later down the road, but we just would ask that you let us know who you'd like us to have as a point of contact to, to have those conversations.
We will do that.
Okay.
Do you have any cards?
I do, yep.
So we can hold it?
I'll, I'll drop one off.
Just wanna take a break for drainage.
Doug, you ready here, you wanna do that first? It's up to the board, yeah, for drainage.
Yeah, I thought I saw it down.
Doug, you ready? Long as you've been waiting patiently.
Thank you all for all this for. Yes, good morning again.
Good morning again, sir.
First thing, we got non-discrimination assurance.
Correct, yeah. Uh, Title VI, non-discrimination assurance agreement, uh, Title VI was a. Part of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four. When we receive federal funds, we are required to not discriminate. So whenever we design projects, the road department designs projects, purchases road right of way. Lots of project, hires consultant engineers. We, we have an obligation not to discriminate. I think in two thousand thirteen, uh, this was, uh, brought up and we completed some agreements. Again, in two thousand, I believe it was eighteen, we, two thousand seventeen. We completed some information and now I just wanna bring us up to date. I included in your information the. Non-discrimination agreement, the non-discrimination policy statement and all the assurances. All the data in November one of twenty twenty-two and I'd just like to get us up to date. With the swap projects where the ability for the state to spend money on our projects and keep all the federal funds. We were able to. Not concentrate on this as much, but now we are, uh, back to where we're spending federal dollars, uh, on the local level. The agreement has Roger being the chair supervisor, he's in charge of the age, agency. Designated one Title VI coordinators, myself. And it talks about the organization obligations. Then we also have the. We also have that, uh, part of the policy statement, they're on our website, both of those, and then the associated. Non-discrim, uh, non-discrimination assurances. So I asked the board to go ahead and approve these.
I have a motion to approve the non-discrimination policy. Motion by Pla, do I have a second? Second by Los. Any discussion on agreement? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Close? unanimous.
Okay, just. All the information you'd have signed, Roger, if that's what I need.
Yep.
I'll move the, uh, request for work in the road right of way, uh, there's information in your electronic file or electronic folder, excuse me. Uh, last week we were contacted by Kerry Mastin, who, uh, is an operator up in the north end. Landowner up in the north end of Cassoot County. Uh, he and his neighbor, Russ Huber, are putting in a tile, they need to go through two hundred fortieth avenue. We have everything, the road department has everything that they need in order to comply with the policy, Mr. Mastin has provided all of that. And, uh, we actually gave Mr. Mastin verbal to go through, go ahead and go through the road or the process of delivering material to him. So I would recommend.
Do I have a motion to approve construction on the right of way? Preceptor makes a motion, I'll second the motion, any discussion on the crossing in Hebron Township? If not, all those in favor, please say aye. Close? Motion carried five to zero.
And then, uh, we have a request from Interstate Power and Light. Uh, they are removing, this is in such a seventeen of Prairie. Again, this is in your folder. This is in, uh, St. Benedict, they are gonna be removing a overhead line. From the road right of way to a home and replacing that going underground, so that'll be working just a little bit in our road right of way. Uh, and I would recommend approval of this request.
Mr. Casey makes the motion, Mr. Los, one second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion carried five to zero.
Thank you. All right. Uh, discussions, the. Bridge to bridge, I was down there last week. I do have more people working on that, they are planning to pour it prior to Thanksgiving. Kind of thinking. We're kind of thinking fifteenth is when they're gonna be looking, fifteenth or the sixteenth, so it's. Get that, take care of. I should open. Balls? First week in December. When snowfall.
I was gonna say, I told you snowballs would be good, and you.
Uh, four-way bridge, that is, uh, actually, we take it down the snow fence there. Uh, people are going across, we still have a little bit of construction on that, but shortly, uh. But shortly, we should have everything overdone by the end of this week. Uh, it'll have rock on it over the winter, and then next year we will resurface that.
The Big Six Bridge, do you have a slow sign or something on that by chance, or is there any signs that say speed?
There are bump signs for Big Six East and West.
Yes.
There's bumps, there's a advisory, a bump with an advisory speed limit, with a bump actually between the between pavement and rock, both east and west.
It looks heading north on that, the road that's right beside it on Sunday.
Yeah, there's
And a vehicle was coming, I bet he went over that bridge about sixty mile an hour, he hit that white rock, dust and rocks are flying everywhere.
Yeah, we don't have a speed limit, but we have advisory planes or advisory.
East and west, you got stop signs.
North or south.
I think south's about change.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, resurfacing, we're shouldering, they're shouldering. Uh, they should be finished up with shouldering uh, the end of this week, and then they got traffic marking on it, and that'll be all completed. There's a bridge up at Hebron Township, section, excuse me, Lincoln Township, section eleven. Um, they will be driving piling this week. Crutch gravel down at uh, Wire Pit. They got a good start on that uh, this week, close to fifty thousand there, so. Highway one sixty-nine bridge, I just received notice from uh, the DOT. Uh, they believe at uh, November thirty, that'd be open to traffic. They still have some shoulder work, subdrain, traffic marking, and rumble strips to get in that. Excuse me, that is the Highway eighteen project, the November thirtieth. And then the one sixty-nine bridge, I got the approaches, barrier rail, and paved shoulders to complete, and they're looking at the November fifteenth, this being the We're still looking for mechanic, Laverne operator, Lone Rock operator, and also operator at our mechanic, or excuse me, the transfer station. And we do have safety meeting planned for Friday, this Friday coming up, uh, at the Nature Center, and if any of the board would like to attend that, you know.
Six to eight?
Eight time, yes.
Went forward the other day on that road that goes by Downey Bash's, the new overlaying, they had that all striped. They, the shoulders were done and it was striped. How come Laverne Saxton ain't striped yet?
They are still shouldering, or the Laverne Saxton, it is striped.
It's striped?
Yeah.
Just drove out last night, I guess I didn't pay attention.
Yeah, that one is complete.
Oh, it's done, Doug?
Yeah.
Guess when you're half tired going home, they'll see it.
Anything else for Doug? We're done, while we take a fifteen minute break, I'm ready.
Thank you. Thank you.
Absolutely. I don't believe so, but yes, okay, like I said, in terms of if it's here, so many county attorney, however, they they ultimately want to work through that. Legal fees can be built, thank you, okay, so I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Yep.
Let's stay ready. Get all the money on the trip.
Oh, that's a good idea. Yeah, looking at this, I'm gonna
You're never going to be able to enter anything.
I never quite recommended me, you can walk in at eight thirty. That's ninety percent of the investment. Or else it's only the first item. Some of the, anyway. See you later. It's been quick, so, right, I don't, yeah, yeah. I don't
Although you'd be surprised if next week would be calling angry.
I told him, yeah. If you approach next week, yeah, I can almost say that. I don't know, it's because it took too long, but I just wanted, I didn't want to miss it. Yeah. I just like to more people than anything call it to our office. Oh, I'm sure, some sort of, I'm sure. Got to figure out something like that, you know. Don't, don't, can't give any really, you know, but I do like what's being a square long and know what direction to point them, you know, you know. And and I wish we would have started with our town attorney. From there after we got it.
You know, one day I think I could sit on that side of it too, but it's just for city for stuff. Lots of so.
For you. Who are you?
That's it, well, um, yeah.
I see your sign, sure.
Everything's about that.
Where are you? Would be in the aren't in. I know, you just like, I'm going for this year, yeah.
I'll go in, it'll be on my ballot.
I, yeah, yeah. You live on the east side or the west side?
I live there.
There.
East or west.
What, which street?
East South Street.
East South?
Corner of Booster, East South.
Okay.
Uh, I never know.
That's pretty close, you tell the word that you're lying, yeah. Say, you know, our budget? Yeah. The first dollars that we see in the budget were many dollars that we can spend. Oh, I realize that, but for the coming year. No, that is for next October. Money that we can budget. Do a budget meeting called December, January, February? Yeah, that money don't get But you can't, but I, but I guess my point was figure out no. Money for that, no. No, you can't. Well, what do you decide on the budget? I mean, for the fourteen months yet. Okay, that money starts in October. Right, that's what you collect. Right. So if we decide to take it on the December, that money's not available for Okay. So it's not. Why is that correct me? Yeah, no, it's not there anyway. Okay. Yeah. It's a long process. Yeah, yeah, as everything is. Yeah. Yeah, thanks, Roger.
And they just different district again.
Yep.
So the one did the district, you run it into that, that's something that
Well, it changed, it was always a
It changed my software.
Mine probably changed the least out of the three borough districts. They've changed so that I have more outgrown subdivisions. Donny Lost now, or I should say, my opponent, you know, he he has more outgrown subdivision. Donny Lost has strip that goes a mile east of one sixty-nine down to Irvington, which would have previously been in the district if I had.
Uh, I was gonna say, I got taken out of
Where do you live?
Uh, Western Hills, just
So, so you're in, you're in my
Right, I I moved, I moved out of three and moved to one.
Yep.
The district, the, when it got redistricted, it took, took mine, that subdivision out of three
Right.
And into one.
It's pretty much, it's everything south of Port Road and west of one sixty-nine. It's kind of all the subdivisions that I would be serving. And Rogers, they, 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 they let, or had him come down
Yeah, he's got
Into Crestwood Township, and he's got a little square there that they cut out.
Yeah.
I don't know how they figure it's
Fourth and the fifth changed quite a bit.
Well, because it used to be Kyle was a whole left half of that northern, north of eighteen, and Roger was the east half, well, now it's middle of the top.
Yeah.
So.
And it was surprising how close they got the populations in, in, in the three, from what I recall, I mean, it was like
Yeah.
Tens of people, you know, the difference.
I know, that was, that was really close. So I guess whoever's down in the state office, they got that figured out. I was just glad the board
My lights are so screwed, I keep joking about how they had a four-year-old with a train in there, and said, just go ahead and just draw some lines and
I'm just glad the board voted earlier this year to keep the districting numbers changed, correct, the same, because the state had changed them all, and then everybody already goes and gets their signatures under district, whatever, and or get their flyers for district, whatever. Yeah.
I like, you know, I deal with a lot of counties, like the ones that have districts that are that large.
Yeah.
Those you could, unlike, down, down western counties.
Yeah.
There's been one or two at, at, at a given time, there won't be that's what would be seen.
Right, right.
Just like, that's what could happen.
Well, it's a population issue, yeah, where people are gonna know.
That's the same way.
Eskerville is that larger, and the county's, and very much. Hancock, Hancock's that larger. Humboldt's a district.
Yeah, Humboldt's got a district.
Western Hills was more, I talked to it when I was doing that, I think, a couple months.
I didn't, uh, you
You know, especially
The road is not what
I know, you could pull in there and you take the first ride there, and go down and and back in there, there's a lot more back in there.
I need to talk to, to Doug too, there's I think they're supposed to replace the culvert under that, that dip.
Yep.
Uh, next construction season, that's the only way. I live back behind that.
Oh, you live in that neighborhood, that, the Red Alases, yeah.
Uh, so you take that out, that's the only way.
Right.
The only way in and the only way out, so I don't know.
Yeah, I'll get, better get your helicopter.
I, I said the zip line, we just
Zip line?
We just, online the trees, we just, uh, yeah, you'd have to have two of them, but start on the one end and
Might be kind of difficult for our trees. Oh, no.
Well, I don't, well, I don't expect it, I don't expect it to be, I would hope in a, in a week or so that have it, I could buy at least one of the groceries, so I would hope to have them, I would have
Roger?
Traversable or or something.
Great. Some, it's a little bit, yeah.
Think you don't, think you don't inherently think about home buys.
Right.
But, you know, what happens when this is
Yeah, I think, and that too, you have two reasons you'll go down in your path.
Right, well, she don't have money like that.
Trees on there, the road goes completely out. Old other cars. Trees on here.
We had, uh, sure, we had well, and they had to cut through the road one day, and it was only a, a day, but and the weather was, I had forgotten that they were doing
Oh, yeah.
So then you show up back here, Mr. Dan.
Didn't even tell the guys that.
I'm just going up to let the dog get, and then I was they're trying to, you know, cut, pull them through the road, so it's like, oh, guess I'm walking.
That's gonna be fun, man. I'm driving through trenches.
Do you phone?
Yeah, it was, yeah, I guess, and I had to drive through. I, I, I literally, there, you know, pitches that go in my back, just drop off, drop off, and say, you're going two, three foot drop, and then banging it drops I would just come up with yesterday, uh, on four.
I got some spots I'll talk to you about after the meeting.
Great.
I'll stop over.
I was gonna say, you just gonna run up to the office and
Yeah.
Just basically more of the same.
Small spots, certain areas, yeah.
Right, more of the same of what we were looking at, so.
Similar, a little bit, a little bit different.
Okay, cool, we'll talk about it up
Did you check out that?
Did not.
Yep, yep. I have my copy of it, she can make you a copy of it, but I had, I had brought my note along for the information.
I'll, I'll talk to her and see if I
Yeah, I'll, I'll say this with you.
It's, I don't know where, see everybody. I'm just having fun and post.
Yeah, it's, it's all hard to see all, all these people up there. Sitting in the back here.
Who didn't hear that?
Well, the boardroom was over there.
Yeah, I know.
Different room, but just, it is more space if you're alone.
My suspicion is that it's low there.
I'm, I'm gonna go, go with that's engineer probably designed it. I guess Indian like the red bandaid parade, but
Yeah.
Yeah, and I saw you tractor.
Yeah, we, uh, so the, uh, field truck in there.
Yeah.
It's got the flashing lights on it, we control candy, just
No.
Festival, so that's
Right. I think you must have been later, you must have been later in the parade, because
We
I went through and then I came back and
We typically request that, because I help with the, the bus parking
Oh.
vans.
Gotcha.
And so if we
You gotta get the van or something?
No, I just, that was, uh, when I was involved with the outgoing chamber, it was, uh,
Okay. What year's that?
It was, it was basically like, hey, we're gonna want one thing from you a year, one year, because I I can help park buses, I can, I can stand in the road and not get run over, so that was, uh, that's just been my, my go-to for that, so, uh, we just then requested we could be in the back half, because all the vans get there so much earlier than even the parade starts.
Yeah.
Also, certainly, gives a great excuse to go get the truck washed up before it, uh, brings it up to solid, and nice, nice opportunity to wash, so that, once a year, why?
And you don't need, probably like me, you know, like, our business is just, I'll go wash, wash the vehicle one day, and then go drive down three-year-old roads the next day, and it's like, why did I do that for, I don't know.
Well, yeah, it's, uh, tell the guy, wash it before the Band-Aid parade, but, but like, just, but that Friday afternoon, go wash it, else, as the guys will have it done
Yeah.
Go out, go out, or out in the field, or
Especially this year, it's a drive as well.
Yeah. And if you're at it, we can go ahead and vacuum it, get all your stuff, nice and organized, uh, this, uh, great excuse for that.
Ready for the seat in the old job? I'm ready. Be real light.
As.
So.
Probably.
Aaron got over his week.
Ready for it, so.
Only has to give a word by the first, but I looked in previous minutes and you guys have always approved this before, so okay, yeah, next week. That's okay, but I'll pass it down to you guys.
Just so certain. Let's say it.
I love it.
We're trying. Robert.
What's happening? What's in the brief?
I thought that much today, and I opened my voice. Any damage at all, is he, is he, rock okay?
I think, yeah, I think he's able, he's able to. But I don't, he's pretty weak yet, so that's why they have. Get the strength of him.
He was my. My sister, he was my brother.
A month, yeah. And then, I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, the other day, yep, rich, and there's, there's a well. Yeah. It's been a long day, baby. Could be worse, this winter it will be still here.
I think it's facing. Yeah, it does that once in a while.
Okay, I, I knew I'd heard stuff about that, but I didn't know, is there anything we can do or don't?
No, no, they, it's just part of having old.
Or it's a tankless. But let's do.
Oh.
If you think about it.
It doesn't have the capacity to take.
Doesn't have the, the air.
They're.
Oh, it doesn't have the vent.
They, they get enough.
They're aware of.
Yeah, that's, that's what causes it.
Yeah, that doesn't surprise me, I, I knew I'd heard about it before, but I had seen it myself, so.
Yeah, the first time I saw it, it scared me, it's grabby, like, what is happening?
We are all here and we are going to go into section. Drainy. Our first thing is BMW brush control, Mr. Reaper.
Good morning. I guess you share a lot. Get the call, really? You're now. But at that time, you there? I do have an extra copy of. I guess I'd just like to start off by, um, going through a couple of things I found out there. Again, like I mentioned to you on Sunday, when I ran into that there were some beaver dams in your area that I'd noticed. And, uh, if you want the locations on those. Yeah, I mean. Dark Saturday. It's, uh, DD twenty five. Flat one. Flat one? Yeah, section twenty six. They were just, uh, just east off from two hundred and thirtieth avenue. And then the other one was in your area, it was DD one sixteen. And it was just south of B fifty eight, section eleven. Section eleven, Phillips Curry, Laverne. Uh, that's gonna be in Sherman. Sherman? No, 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 no. Sherman, I know of one that. I don't see it on the map, which. East or west of the Laverne-Saxon Road? It'd be west of P sixty, two miles. I've seen the same one, I've seen that, some Kaisers. I think it is, Sherman. Yeah, that'd be Sherman. Yeah, yeah. And that'd be just south of, uh, Blacktown right there, you see it, Blacktown, both being all three of them, you can see it from the road. And they're not made out of trees either, are they? Yeah. They're not made out of trees. Uh, the one I think is, because right there, if you, if you look at that one in section twenty six of Perron. There's right in the corner between the ditch and the, uh, field, there's a little corner that has a bunch of brush and shrubs and stuff in it. I'm, I'm assuming that one's got some sticks in it, but the other one down south there, there's no place to, it would have to drag stuff along related. It wouldn't that way. I know you got everything in our cricks dead. Exactly. My uncle's in our cricks, you got everything dead, they're in a tree growing in those cricks. There's, uh, they're, they're, they're clean, no doubt about it, they're, they're only ditched, I really found a lot of stuff in. That'd be up in Tows area, it would be, uh, used to be Rogers area, but that'd be joint drain sixty eight, one thirty six. And, uh, lower two miles of that would just, whole channel would just saw the willows. Got up, um, to the north there. Actually, that one there, we, we will go over, we won't do anything with it this fall, because the willows are in the bottom of the ditch, and we use oils this time of the year. One thing, it's a lot more expensive to use the oils if you have a lot, a lot of brush like that, and another thing, we can't spray that in the water, everything else we have has a. Label tour, weekend spray, but it allows for us spraying in the water, but even the oils, we have to skip away. There's no water in the crypt this time of year. So.
We cleaned that grid probably ten years ago.
That's a good point, but that's a change.
It was full of cottonwoods, big ones.
These will be.
True, they were put across, getting bigger.
And otherwise, everything looked, I didn't, you know, it wasn't, uh, nothing really jumped out at me. But, uh, I did quote, that's always the way I quote this stuff, is I, I quote a total maximum, and then the guy's going to do a time materials, not to exceed. Maximum that I have on the quote here, uh, one thing that I just recently have experiences, we've got like Cotella. Has already had through the summer, about a seven percent increase on their, their chemicals, and I just talked, in fact, when I was waiting to come in, this morning, I talked with my supplier. Bill Walker, he said that, uh, expect another one, that Cotella is gonna jump three times as another, close to eight per, eight percent. That's, uh, where it's coming from, and the, and the base oil that we use, I knew that was going to happen, because I was notified in the spring, that went up three dollars a gallon, and. The, uh. By the time it's all done with Cotella, the, the Gullon four, the Element four is gonna be up almost a whole ten dollars per gallon, and those are the prices we use in drainage. So. And I guess I have comparisons here, uh, this year, the total quote, this is what I called the up year, we're on the side of the county that has the most ditch miles. Total quote was a hundred and nine thousand. As an example, I'll go back to the, the previous three years when we did the work. Uh, the last time we went through that, uh, three years ago, in that same portion of the county, what was it, one hundred and one, two hundred and fifty dollars, and. Four hundred, one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, and the actual amount billed when we were done was sixty three thousand, four forty two. In the following year, which would be, uh, the west half, or the western, north to south, the quote was eighty five thousand, five hundred, and the actual was forty seven thousand, two eleven. Now, that take, have to take into consideration that PK one was under major construction, so we didn't do anything with it in that cycle. And now that they've got that completed, I'll not look at some of those areas that, uh, had some concerned farmers. With more mobile, because he's got a whole bunch of trees. Yeah, yeah, a lot of trees on there, I see where he's concerned, and with the timing, it's gonna, it's just gonna fit right, I mean, because. They just finished that ditch and I was due to be done next year, which, uh, last year, last, when I went and looked at it, boy. Gave it, it, uh, there was some growth there, but it hadn't grown enough to, to get, uh, effective kill, so we. Then we do clean outs, or you take trees off, you do cleanup, we like to have at least two years' growth. On the trees before we come back in, and tree, that, that along the rotation, we would just go ahead and do it, say, but it didn't be done for two years yet, please go ahead and do it next year maybe. Then, uh, the year pre, or the year, last year's ditches, uh, it was twenty seven thousand, the actual was twelve thousand, eight thirteen. That was on the portion of county, the center third, where it's got the, the fewest ditch miles, and we actually do. OHK eight, there Humboldt is the controlling county, so we do that ditch with theirs, which is in the same year. And I did, uh, on the quote sheet, on the, on the parade sheet, I did, uh, like with the car line four older, which we, we use, uh, this is actually Element four that we use in that. I've already increased the prices on my parade sheet to absorb what Cotella's gonna do in November. So Walker says it's gonna be a seven point seven percent increase, so I've already tried to work that in, so I don't have to come back in and say, hey, this product obviously blew up again.
I had a question here on this, um, the first one is sixty eight dash one thirty six.
Yeah.
The top portion says it includes two thousand feet in Perron County.
Yeah, that was, uh, uh, when they cleaned that ditch, that was an agreement that was made in Perron County, that's not as, as critical to do that now, because Perron County for. As long as I've been working in this area for forty years, have been hit and miss on maintenance on their drainage ditches. And they've got to, I don't know whether the board has finally decided to start listening to their, their new ditch inspector, they have what they call ditch inspectors in Minnesota. Which is supposed to be a goal between, between the boards and the landlords, and. So far, for one full three year rotation, they've had us in doing the brush control, and what they've done in the past is they, they do it maybe a year or two, then they try to do something different, then. By the time they get back, us back in there, it would be cleanup again, but I think now, they're gonna be on a regular rotation, and that ditch was actually one that we. Did work on for them this, this last summer, so, and that's what it was, and you'd have to go back and talk to. Previous supervisors to see what that agreement was, and maybe Marge has got something on it, that was an agreement that was made, that it actually goes up to the, the first. Road crossing, which is just less than a half mile, probably about a quarter mile.
Okay, yep, I was looking at that on.
Yeah. And I just left that on there for now, you know, just.
So those four in Hancock County, where the lead county and all on Vemport?
Uh. Or maybe.
I think, I think, yeah.
Okay.
We are, um.
Yeah.
And what I'll do there, I've got my done map, my main map that I, the county rotation, and what we do there is. I'll be seeing that board next Monday, and we do those ditches, those three joint ditches, instead of billing their portion to them and your portion to you. Whichever county is the controlling county, I just send one invoice.
Okay.
And then, uh, that way. Levels up the, the split and everything, it's more confusing for me as well, when I start getting payments, just easier to, to do it that way. Then you only have to split one bill, so I haven't had to figure out two. And there's one other joint I knew that, uh, that's a little small ditch. Uh, seven dash one twenty, that's only about a mile of ditch altogether, that's right down the.
Great.
Across the seventeen, right there.
Off of Wesley.
Yeah. And I'll look at that little piece of ditch up there, Tom, get back, I'm gonna be looking at stuff in. I'll offer county next week, so I'll swing by, then take a look at it, I'll get a, I'll give you a call, and if you want to call the homeowner, I can, but if you. I just, man.
Just let me know, I'll let you know personally.
I'll let you know, yeah.
For that other request, yeah.
The life is probably something I can wait until next year, it's on the schedule for next year.
Yeah, I just told them I'd bring it up to you.
Yeah, yeah.
See what you thought.
And I apologize, I'm pretty sure that. Marge had emailed that to me, but that's fine, like you said, I get so much garbage email, I'm going through delete and stuff. Maybe I hit a button, I wish it, I'm on the one at E S A P. So I have. Questions or?
Do I have a motion to approve the brush control for coming here?
Both.
Either way, I have.
Okay.
All seconded.
Motion made by Casey, second by Stecker. Any discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried five zero.
As always, I, um. Call Marge, she'll shoot out an email to everyone on the board that were off to work, and I always call the county sheriff as well, it's more critical this time of the year than the rest of the year, because you got hunting seasons opening. Concerned farmers that they're not so concerned, rather than they're concerned, might be out there shooting their feathers or deer.
But can you spray a tree without leaves on it though?
That's, that's the oils I was talking about, so you guys, you gotta make that, well, and that's why with the, the, uh, with the price and all the chemicals are going up, you know, I. Myself think that, uh, some of these companies are use, still using. The COVID chasm to, uh, raise prices, because I, there's, like I was talking to another supervisor down in Otis County. Explained to him that, you know, these oils are gonna go up and they're all totally based, and, you know, the, he told me how much lower the barrel of oil was going for right now, the prices were still going up. Went from a hundred and something to seventy eight is what he was saying. Somebody, I think it's being used as an excuse in some cases.
Are you gonna spray road ditches down too, if you see them, or are you just gonna wait and go, because you're just spraying the cricks now, right?
Yeah, see, the thing isn't through drainage ditches, we do a lot of work in Minnesota through the summer months, because, uh, I think I mentioned this to, to this board before, that they have what's called the governor's law up there. That back in two thousand eighteen, as of November first of two thousand eighteen, uh, this was a law that was written by the governor and it, 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 I threw, and they. Every drainage ditch in, in the state of Minnesota has to have. The, uh, drainage ditches have to have a rod of set aside on each side, a rod aside is what they call it. Set aside, and I guess on some of the, the other ditches there. In fact, there's one we ran into this year that was just annexed in, a creek that was annexed in, and then like on the rivers and, and streams, there's actually, has to be fifty foot on each side. And with that, that's why we'll come in, we'll work in Iowa to start with in the spring, till the crop gets too big, you know, there's always places you could go, but then you run into crop, and then you got, you got CRB again. But that's just, that's not efficient, to go out there and have to go back to all the spots that have crop, so what we do is we work in Iowa. March or whatever we get going, depending on snow, till the crop gets too tall for us to, to scrabble it, then we switch everybody up to doing drainage in, in Minnesota, our brush groups. Because there's road blowing inside of the ditch, and when the crop starts coming off, out, we come back into Iowa, and we won't get access.
I had you sprayed beside Laverne-Saxon Blacktown, right beside mom's place, there's all those trees a few years ago, they're all back again.
Is that it?
Back brushing my mom's.
Okay.
Uh. One fiftieth street, right, no, the one fiftieth street on Laverne-Saxon Blacktown, uh, east side of the road. There's a lot of, they're all cottonwoods, because that big cottonwood, like you have.
Okay.
All that seed's blown about right over to there.
Yeah, yeah. Cottonwoods and willows are really, let me, you guys stay after them. But that'll be, I think that's on the schedule on the rotation next year already, yeah.
Say it was about two years ago, and you had, two, three years ago, you had that bandic to deal.
Yeah.
Perfect.
I've got, I talked to Doug, there's a couple of nose sprays out there, too, that are kind of getting away, but I'll talk to Doug, know it about that, the policy is, if they want a nose spray, they can sign the nose spray, but then they have to take care of themselves. There's a, I don't like to mention any names at the board, there's a few people on that area that have nose sprays, but the trees are getting out of control.
Doug, by me, where I look?
Well.
I have your dog. I mentioned it to Doug too. Good.
Cause that's right in the, the form when they sign it, you know, if we won't spray it, then you're required to, and if you don't, then they're gonna get it and do it themselves and. Do it ourselves.
They give you some pretty big trees on there.
Anyway, I don't wanna pick on anybody, so.
Thank you for not picking on them.
All right, then, I'll be in touch when we get going.
Appreciate it.
I'll, I'll go back to you, college, soon as I look at that.
Sounds good.
All right.
Thanks, Doug.
We're up to with Bolton and Meek, grain four twenty eight completion.
Good morning, Tyler.
Good morning. Copy's there for the record. We should all have a, a copy of this as well. This is the, branch district four lateral twenty eight tile repair for the lower portion lowered. There was some issues up in this area of being able to tile to that. Many tile that was there went in, lowered it, crushed the old one. Has since been completed, we measured up the areas of damage as they are displayed on the map here. So in that packet is first the certification of contract completion as is required by the drainage code. Four sixty eight, one oh one. That is the certification of completion. Second then is the completion report that outlines the project was bid this April. Contract was awarded to Holland Contracting. The original contract price there of two hundred and ninety five thousand, one hundred dollars. This was the project that when we went out and did the investigation before construction, there was a significant distance further than was drawn on the original plans. That was that change order for additional pipe of fifty three thousand, three hundred and ninety two dollars. Actual contract quantities, when it was all said and done, there was a decrease then of three thousand, four hundred, fourteen dollars and eighty cents. For a total project dollar of three hundred and forty five thousand, seventy seven dollars and seventeen cents. Of which ninety percent has been paid with just the retainage left due to the conflict. We have also tabulated the damages as they appear on the map for all of the landowners. This report we sent to the landowners on whom the work was performed. And the notice will need to be published in the local paper. So that is to say not everyone in the district gets notified, just those that, publicly they all get noticed, but just those that got work performed on them, get the actual notice that they should report. That hearing would need to, the completion hearing would need to be held at least ten days from today, from the acceptance of the report, rather. Marge and I talked tentatively. We weren't sure that we could make the fifteenth. Marge didn't think we could make the fifteenth work. Uh, next then would be the twenty second, November twenty second at ten AM, I believe. Marge is the timing suggested. At that hearing, the landowners will have the opportunity to object to any of the figured damages or any of the work as it was performed. I was just out there in that area Friday. In my opinion, it looks, looks really good. The land restoration, the, the pipe outlet is clear. And it's, I know we don't have much water in the bottom of the ditch right now, but it's got over a foot and a half of free outlet into the, into the ditch bottom. One thing that is also worth noting is that the damages on this, because it is also emptying into four, these are just the damages on this, this project. The damages for the ditch repair that is also going on will be separate and as part of that project. So if any landowner asks, these are, these are just the ones that pertain to lateral twenty eight. Any questions?
Yeah. First, we have to have a motion to accept the report, correct?
Uh, yes.
I would make that motion.
Mr. Stecker makes a motion to accept the report. Do I have a second?
Second.
Was that lost?
Mm-hmm.
I have a second by loss. Any discussion on the report? Hearing now. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried. Next, we need a motion to set the date and time, which would be ten o'clock on the twenty second. Mr. Stecker makes the motion. Do I have a second? I'll second his motion. Any discussion on the completion hearing? You've heard nothing?
I have heard.
The landowners that are, they're satisfied?
Uh, in fact, like I said, I was out there Friday, take a look at the, the ditch and the tile while I was there. Um, the area that was originally petitioned for because of the inability to prep the tile. It, to my knowledge is all, from what it looks like, it's all now been pattern tiled into, into the system. So.
And there is free board on the outlet?
Yep. I, I mean, I, I would assume just from the amount of tile that I saw go in, take that as satisfaction of the, of the work. Uh, but yes, there's, there's free board. The, the surface restoration, it's all black dirt back put on top. Uh, just gently mounted to, to allow for settlement, but nothing that's, nothing that's. Yeah. So yeah, it, it's very traversable. It's a, a very, the job very well done, uh, in my opinion. The, the only thing I would say in any form negatively of how the project went was that it was at times difficult to get tight because the manufacturers are so bottled up and so hot. But that's not any of the contractors, you know, that's not their fault.
It was what you implied quite a bit.
Yeah. But other than that, they did, they did a great job. Yeah, not much more to say. The only, the one additional comment to the project at, at large is that with this, there was a reclassification based on private tiling that they put in their own private name. That is not yet completed. That'll be done for the, in the spring when all of those assessments are figured. So we'll, we'll have that completed by then. But that's for now and, and at the completionary, those numbers won't yet be figured.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Can't leave already. You can't be done.
I, well, I mean, I, I mean, I think so.
Really? Hey, I had a question on DD four a little bit ago on the break.
Okay.
Uh, when's your approximate time? Do you think it's going to be completed?
Um. Surely within the month because that's the completion date is the first of December.
So the completion hearing will be in early? It's going to be the last of December?
It'd be, if, you'd probably, if we didn't have a problem messing with the holidays and stuff like that, otherwise.
Otherwise it'll be January?
Yeah, otherwise in January, yeah.
Because you'll have to put your report together, bring it to us, set a time and date. So it.
Right.
I would be surprised if it was this year.
There's, I mean, we could, we're pretty well up on damage measurements and everything like that. Uh, so we could, we could turn it around pretty quickly once everybody was, was satisfied. We're, I talked to the contractor just yesterday, working on scheduling a project walkthrough with them. There are some things on punch lists, not, not a lot. We're not like significant areas, but there are some areas where, um, there's some additional grading that's going to need to be done for some traversable areas, basically just areas that were already high that spoiled and get pushed far enough out. But it's only what, Kyle, a couple hundred feet at a, at a time or, or a curve on a ditch. It's not, it's not big, big, long runs. There's debris and rocks and things that they have to pick up yet. They're finishing up placing the rip rap, I think as we speak.
I know they were on it yesterday.
So, uh, as, as far as any of the, the excavation and the bulk of the work, I'm very happy with their, their performance, what it looks like in, in, I would say over ninety percent of it. It's just getting that last little ten percent here in the last month to.
The final touch up.
Really to, to polish it to where it needs to be.
North of Bancroft, they're not done leveling hundred percent.
No, there, there's still, and there's level and work that needs to be done. And from their own admission, there was, there were some sections that, uh, they wished the, uh, Dozeric operator had had a little bit more training, but they, they're aware of all of that. They're not.
They'll be coming back.
Yeah. They're not, they're not counting themselves done or mobilizing out.
Uh, is there any specific facilities you're talking about?
Yeah, I just got asked by about four or five different farmers if they were going to come back and level more.
Who is that? Cause I've talked to a couple here recently. I mean, talked to Tyler about two of them already, but I don't know if they're the same or not.
I'll get back to you on.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, that's fine.
Call me with names or anything like that. We plan on walking the whole drive, well, driving the whole thing with them.
Okay.
Uh, to make sure that, that all parties are, are satisfied. But if you have specific instances that you would like pinpoint addressed, absolutely get that to me.
Well, they're going to do it and we'll, we'll wait until after they're done before we're complaining. I'm just making sure that you're.
Yeah, yeah. No, we're, we're, uh, I think they're feeling the crunch and we're, we're on top of it with making sure that they.
Yeah, because it ends December, correct?
December first is the, is the completion date there. I, I don't, from my perspective, I don't see any concerns with them hitting that. They just, a nice reminder to them is always preferred rather than get mad at the fact, you know? All right.
Yep.
Thank you.
Marge, we are up to, I think, requests.
Yeah, I love this. Can I scotty go? Yeah, that's fine. So I got the first one, number fifty one, H K eight. It's, uh, Matt Kellner called it in. There's a west bank open ditch washed out. So I'll be over west. So I'll have T and M do that. But I got number, that one was fifty one. This was fifty three. Section twenty nine of Sherman, Chad Birdie. And I'll have triple E take care of that. It's a broken tile, twenty four inch broken tile.
Yeah, I had two here. Um, number fifty two is lead yard section one for Dwight Eichenberger. Roger, do you, did you fill this out? Do you have a phone number for him?
I didn't fill it out, but I think I probably got a phone number for.
And then that's a sixteen inch broken tile. Then fifty four, Lincoln, section eleven, Jane Davids, open tile that's flagged. Those are my two.
And supervisors needs request to take care of them.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. The floor, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. I was carried unanimous. I don't have him in my phone, but I gotta write it down somewhere.
Okay. If you can get that to me, it'd be great.
So that'd be in the windmill country.
Yeah, lead yard section. And you got Raisel written on here. Have they already done it or?
I don't, yeah, I don't know anything about it. But Marge, you know, Raisel's written on.
On fifty two? Is that already completed?
Raisel was doing timing for it. All kinds of.
Yeah.
He might have talked to me and I forgot or anything.
You smiling at Will?
You're smiling. That's me. I smile.
Happy boy? Good.
We are up to discussion and time with our auditor.
We will ask to come in to give you an update on the Sheriff's Office book project.
Oh. The roof top units. We're having some issues getting controls from the train itself is what they're telling us. I don't know the extent of it at this point, but I want to keep you guys abreast that there's probably going to be some issues coming. Our control guys, same ones that did all the controls here, have a, have. They, they're already putting controls over here, part of the bid. There might be, uh, like a back charge to the contractor. And, uh, we have to give the control guys some more money to get control of these units, trying to keep you up rested on the whole situation. And we don't know the extent of it. I mean, we're not talking fifty thousand dollars by no means. Um, I don't know, but I believe there's something funny going on between the engineer and the contractor. There's something that just is not adding up. So the engineer starts putting nominal values on products. And it don't, something's not right here. And why these parts weren't ordered when the project was approved, they're giving all kinds of excuses. So.
Are they not expecting to be able to have them in time for the completion?
Well, completion is out the window because this was supposed to be back in the spring. But I don't know. They, they told us there's a shift. Uh but I don't know, they they told us there's a ship date of eleven nineteen. But the way the email stated is that they don't believe that's even gonna happen. So why they put a date on it, I don't know. Just trying to keep you guys informed that. Something can go sideways.
One of the last emails we got said, you know, this project was supposed to be completed in May. And the last time we talked with Roger, he said that the back net cards have just been ordered. If this project was supposed to be completed in May, why are we just now ordering a card? There there's something funny going on.
And then the other thing was, he goes, well, we were under the impression that they were coming with the units. Well, when you're talking this scope of work, you don't assume nothing.
Still, if that was the case, they still should have known before now to order them.
Yes. And then if we have to do a DDU, now they're trying to tell us that these cards that are in there are only extra amount.
And I mean, I'm talking patents, like two hundred forty dollars, you can't buy any piece of that.
We're doing, we're doing a little fishing because we think they're trying to pull the wool on us now.
Because Chris can, our control guy that I have. One hundred percent faith in that he's not gonna steer us in the wrong direction. It's saying he can retrofit these units for seventeen hundred bucks a unit.
Right, yeah, that that was another.
Seventeen hundred bucks a unit. Basically put his controls on, forget the back net card. That's why I'm telling you this.
Yeah, well, why would we have to do that? Because we had a contractor, I hire an engineer hired.
That's where the back charge would come in. I don't have, we hired Burglin and Cram.
Right.
Burglin and Cram hired that modus because they didn't do. Roof top units.
But we go back to Burglin and Cram and say, hey, this is your proposal to us, why why did you deviate from it?
Yeah, and that's, I've already been in contact with Doug and let him know this is not right. The one, the one variable in this, what they're gonna throw at your face, and that's why I'm having or letting you know this. Is there, if we go with Chris's controls at some point. We will not have variable speed compressors, which means. Instead of the compressor coming on and shutting off, it's gonna, it might come up to twenty five percent, it might come up to fifty percent or run at a hundred percent. That's what their claim is gonna be. In the real world, having economizers on them units. You can pull in fifty degree air and not even run the compressor.
Right.
So your savings is gonna come using the economizer. And when it's eighty, ninety degrees outside, that compressor ain't gonna variable rate anyways, it's gonna kick on to kick off. So, just so you don't think we're trying to get Chris in there, we're not. I just have more faith in Chris than what this engineer, cause he have the title to say.
So the the current stuff they should have put in already, that should have already been done, that would have the variable.
Yes.
Adjustment.
If we, if we get the back net card, that's the whole thing.
Yeah, it shows up.
What, what savings are we losing? Because we don't, can't even run them the way they need to be run.
Well, the compressors are designed to be run at if either on, the old style on off are variable.
The new ones are variable, some of them, I don't think all the units are variable, I think some.
Some are.
The larger ones.
So I think it's five ton.
That makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, so. We're not talking a pit in this actual savings, what you would see.
But we're still doing some digging, so.
Yeah, so they didn't tell you what kind of controls, they were, would they be Honeywell or some?
What, Chris's?
Yeah.
Oh, I believe some of his are Honeywell, I I can't speak exactly, but it would be. The same automatic logic is what the controls would be. Instead of this back net card, it, we started, this whole fight started. In the conference room over at Sheriff's Office when. We had like uh pre-construction meetings, and we said, hey, we want Chris's controls, well, right away, that threw up a red flag with this engineer. And Jonathan, and we looked at each other then and thought. What's going on here? Because he said it would void the warranty on the units. Well, right now, we have ten units over there running on nothing but our own thermostat, so the warranty is voided now. Or now it's accepted, cause you can't get the ship. So it's, it's been a mess the whole time. That's why I'm just, I just stopped in so you guys are.
We really don't like to hear that.
Well, I know you don't, but you need to.
How many months ago would have that been? What freaking construction meeting?
Yeah, no, I think it was before March, yeah, I think that was back in the fall, like November, almost a year ago.
So we.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, you think we need to get everybody together and have it, put it on the agenda and discuss it, or what do you think?
Um, I I don't think that's a bad idea, I'd like to wait maybe a week until after the nineteenth. Cause that's what they said the ship date was, so I'll give them only a couple weeks.
Well, the twenty second would be our next meeting after the nineteenth.
I mean, that's up to you guys, I'm just trying to make you aware of what's going on, I can send out an email and say, hey, supervisors, why don't you hear?
I'd say let's wait till after nineteen.
Yeah.
Plus it gives us time to figure out the actual cost of the back cars. Like I say, it's a patent, it's what they're offering, if we do have to do a DDU from them. They're talking like two hundred fifty five dollars, well, yeah.
Anytime you do a DDU, it's always in favor of the company.
Right.
So, I mean. I don't know if they think they're trying to pull the wool over all our eyes, but. I've been down this road a hundred times, this is not. Not acceptable, I mean.
I think we should have here, like you said, Donnie, uh. What do you guys think as far as time? Twenty second, twenty nine?
No, that's a Saturday, you ain't gonna be here by Tuesday.
No, I'm not saying to be here.
We'll know it's coming.
If it actually shipped.
Right.
But I think, I mean, it's no different than the humans. First started off in June, and then went to July, and then August, October, and we got some in October.
So even if it does ship on the nineteenth, we wouldn't have it, but we might know when it'd be arriving, so it still might be good to talk to them.
Yeah, because we can, we'll have control of them back net cards. My fear is. They are not gonna be here for over a year, so what did we really say by doing this? That's my concern.
And if they do that, they should have been upfront with us for very essence. I don't feel like they were.
Yeah, there's a few things that.
Kind of have to get it stuffed away, it was Arca money that we're spending, but.
The other reason I'm here, so you guys are not, I mean.
Yeah, I don't appreciate audits, if we do something wrong, but if we do everything right, and we still get audited, I'm comfortable.
Right. That's why I'm just.
Yeah.
Letting you know that this is not a smooth transition on that.
Yeah. I appreciate that. Anything else for Willie?
Are you coming on the sheriff's building?
It's insulated. The insulation is done. Just where we were at lumberyard getting something from lock, so people can't get in there. And the door is still a couple weeks out, the walk-in door. Broken start on garage doors here.
We got those there.
Garage doors are here, wait for the walk. I think clarify that.
Got the door for the UBC building sitting in. South.
The south door, yes, it's sitting there, yep.
Got everything ready to put that into?
Sure, if we were there, it would be ready. Just missing two acres.
Anything else?
I hope not, that's enough for a while.
Keeps you out of trouble.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys. Anything else in the auditor?
Yeah, okay, so. When I talk to you, might have to share something, I guess it's like that very slide, but um. When I talk to you about talking to E S and S. To open up the machines to see if there was modems in the machines, so. Um, I talked to E S and S, had a really nice conversation with them. And she went over from start to finish, um, how the machines are made and what happens with the machine, so they're all made in Omaha, Nebraska. Then the machines are made with modems in them. They're all certified, completely certified from top to bottom. In order to get a modem put in an E S and S machine, you have to apply for another contract. You have to get a contract to have it put in, then that has to be certified again. And then that has to be approved again, they're not just automatically, then you have to have a contract with the US Cellular Company that's gonna supply the. The network or whatever it's called for that modem. Um, if we were to open up the machine and go in there, our warranty would be null. We would no longer have a warranty on it. But um she said that there's really no reason to, because uh you can see on the printout on our machines when we go in and test our machines. On the top of the sheet, it will say modem not detected, and so when we did our public test, we looked at every single one. And every single one said modem not detected. She said there's no brains in the actual machine, the brains is in the USB stick. So the USB stick is what's recording all the data, and that's where the information is, it's not actually in the machine itself. Um, and then none of our laptops. Our hope to the internet have any internet capability whatsoever, we just have one computer um in the election center. That at the end of the night, that we transferred that data from that computer to the Secretary of State's office. The computer that we download the information on does not have any internet capability or access. So it's just that one that trans, that's the data, and then once that data is is sent, then before. It's approved, we uh compare what we sent to what's recorded to make sure the numbers. So, any questions about it?
So we're not gonna do anything really.
Yeah, because it would, it would, we'd have no warranty on the machine if we opened them up, and she said there's no reason. Why they would guarantee that there's no modem in there, and if any, if there is one in there, we have no contracts. Somebody would be going to prison because it's against the law. To have a modem in there without having a contract. Okay, so and then um. Election, um we finished our training for our poll workers. Um Friday, we're open till five o'clock for election, Saturday, we're required to be open eight hours, and we have to be open till at least five o'clock. So our hours will be nine to five on Saturday. So everybody can come vote, um we'll be delivering equipment Friday and Monday to the polling locations. And Tuesday, they open at seven, all the workers will be there at six, um our office. We will be here, I will be at the lecture, the Columbia Event Center at six, and the rest of us will, the rest will be here in the office. Think we're up to. I don't know how many they've had today, but yesterday when they left.
Fourteen eighty?
Thirteen eighty, now I'm confusing myself, almost fourteen hundred, so thirteen eighty.
That's still a lot.
So we'll answer your questions, that's all.
Next week, no meeting, I'll see agenda for the. Anything exciting?
We have voluntary announcement, but nation hearing identified for DD eighty two.
Right.
And then I'll have the update from Cassis Regional Health Center and update from Secondary Road. Back to the bears update. That's it so far.
Large must have sent letters out on DD eighty two.
Yeah, she must have sent those out. I think.
Cause I've been getting the call. What is it? Mr. Stecker.
I did not have any board meetings, um.
Basically.
I didn't have any meetings, I just had uh people calling about the pipe and any questions. Drainage down in PAC one. Still waiting for the contractor to come fix their stuff, I just wanted to get them as well. I called Mr. Raisel yesterday, he's serving that they should be there in about a week. Had a few meetings last week, my first meeting was Care Connections in Northern Iowa. Our fund balance was two million eight hundred sixty four thousand five hundred twenty two dollars and two cents. And a second payment for the employees will be coming earlier than normal, cause they want to get it done. Um, so probably whenever you'll get that. Had two mobile crisis calls to Cassis County. Twenty five calls to the talk line between Cassis, Cassisworth and Winnebago. The Thomas of Alas, the the actor, the true story on the McFarland. He he spoke in front of almost thirty eight hundred students two weeks ago. Um, on March twenty through the twenty fourth, Cassis County, it's gonna be Cassis County, they're gonna hold. A four day class for um any law enforcement on mental health. And I offered them either that building or this building, but they're gonna talk and see what would work better for them. We had a long discussion, exception to policy. So if. If any person goes to an ER for mental health. Whatever their address is, that's who pays for that call. If we have three things they have to meet, first of all, they have to do an application. Second thing is they can't have any insurance, the third thing is they have to be a hundred fifty percent below poverty level for us to pay. So, it was one. In Mary Greeley, in Ames, and two, and of Avery McKenna in Sioux Falls. That had addresses to our region, and each one of them is missing one piece of that puzzle. So we had lengthy discussion on whether we should pay it or not. But Avery McKenna Hospital is affiliated with the Stiola Hospital, which is in our region. So we didn't want to burn any bridges, so we come to the conclusion that we're gonna pay half of the bill. And then not pay the other half until we get all pieces of the puzzle together, so. That was lengthy discussion on that. Uh, we had a special request for uh child glow therapy as a child. Mental health psychiatrist that's gonna open up in Spencer. And he was asking for some money just for some equipment to open, open up, so we did grant him that. Under the request that he tries to hire another child psychologist for this area over here. For people that can't um. Can't go to Spencer, so hopefully that works out.
What kind of a content delay?
Um, it was like. Therapy toys, mask, like a drumstick, a play kitchen, and just stuff like that for children. Um, a small refrigerator. Trading some, some, some books, so. It's like eight thousand three hundred thirty five dollars, so we did grant him that, and hopefully. As we always say, Care Connection, if we can take care of them as children, we hopefully will not have to take care of them as adults. Uh, and then Tuesday night, I had an EMA meeting. Talked about outdoor warning sirens. For these, for the outlying towns, and and Chris is working on some grants for that. Talked about buying a new trailer for the new UTV, cause the old trailer won't fit on it, and we got a quote from Ice and Trailer Sales. Um, but still didn't make any decision on that yet. Our multi jurisdiction, jurisdictional hazard mitigation plans to me, needs to be updated, and that's probably looking at a cost of forty thousand dollars to do that. So we could also table that till next meeting. She did get a grant for the drone for forty-eight thousand. Having a budget meeting in December, she's looking at buying some portable walls and TVs for the ELC. Uh, she has trainings in the building, December twelfth, Alert Iowa Training, January sixteenth, seventeenth. February sixth and seventh, February eighteenth and nineteenth, um, just several different trainings in the building. Then I had a nine-one-one meeting after that. Um, just Don Heidner just gave the Essex update, um, three more thousand dollars in, in radios statewide for a grant. Um, so they're, they're gonna give out the second round of radios to the EMS and fire departments, but some have not, um, installed the first round yet. So we're gonna wait and not give any more radios out to them people till they get their first radios installed. There's a new. It's called Prepared Live nine-one-one video sharing software that we're gonna buy. And so like, if, if you're at an accident or a fire or a domestic, you can, you can text nine-one-one, and they'll ask you. To start videoing, and you hit yes, and your camera audio now can pop up and give video to the dispatchers. So they can see what's going on. Um, and, and, and the screen will be black in the camera on the phone, so people don't know that. It's that you're videoing, and, and it's something they don't need to see over here, they can shut it off too, but, but, but you will be sent a text. To ask you whether you would like to video or not.
Brings up a good point, um, just had our election worker training, we told them that to text nine-one-one, we talked about security, because. I think right now, so we went over security and what to do, how to de-escalate a situation, and. Talks about texting nine-one-one, that they actually may prefer it, because if they're getting a whole bunch of calls, you may be able to text them information that they haven't gotten yet. Somebody from Sweet City said that her, um, nine-one-one calls did not go to Cassis County, they got them in a. I saw that.
They were working on that.
Okay, okay.
It is, it is finally solved.
Right, yeah, we did have an update on that too, yeah.
Okay, okay, sorry, I didn't have, I shouldn't have asked you, okay.
That was, uh, the exchange up there northeast.
So, so if somebody at the Sweet City polling location would text nine-one-one, it will now.
Right, it was Stevens in the game, in the Sweet City area.
And they didn't know where to go.
Yeah, we.
Okay, thank you.
It only took six months.
Thank you.
Um, and then we're still having problems with people putting signs on their house. So we're gonna send another letter to them, and, and some cities have ordinances where they're required, but whether you're gonna start, um. Fortunately, finding it forward or not, that's still up in the air. And then I had a hazmat meeting on Wednesday afternoon, um, hazmat update, they had one still in Basin City. They had a train derailment over by Hampton. It was on the agenda about the CO2 pipeline, and so the hazmat director talked about that, says non-toxic. It's gonna be caused for frostbite in seconds, is what the real big danger is, he says, um. The EPA, DNR, there's no regulations for this pipeline, he said. Um, but what they, what they wanna, there's gonna be some money available for, I guess, CBAs and, and gas monitors. And they just want the fire department to stay up on that and try to, when this money starts being available, that we apply for it. Um, they're thinking about buying, uh, Raymon analyzer, I think I talked about this before. Where they can just stick it up to like this plastic bottle, and they can immediately read what's inside of it. You know, or in, any plastic thing or any steel thing, they can, like they have a barrel or something, they can stick this up there and immediately give them a readout of what it is. Now they have to take a sample, drive it to Iowa City to get it tested. I don't know, it's almost fifty thousand dollars for this, and it's gotta be calibrated every year, so, and they're wondering, you know, all these counties. Got this fentanyl money, if that's something that they could use towards purchasing that.
Could they go check fentanyl with that, I, just curiosity?
Well, if it's, if it's ground up in a powder.
Yeah.
It will read that also.
It will, not just liquids.
No, not just liquid, it's.
Hope they take it down to that pit and find out what's in it.
Yeah. Um, so that was about, that was into that. Thursday, Phil and I talked a local business here in town, had a bunch of questions on the EMS goal, thought to them. On Friday, uh, the Sheriff's Office, Police Office, there's, um, City Bell going on, myself. Eddie Renshaw, I'm back with Amy Keen, the new mental health liaison, see how that was going, and. And she's taken over a hundred twenty calls, and she saves, figures she saved the officers between fifty and sixty hours. Manpower time for what she's doing, um, so it seems like she's really, it's really. It's really going good, like she's been out to several businesses, we talked to the HR, and they've even been calling her, hey, we have an employee that's more escalated. How do we handle it, several calls from, from all three of the schools, and different situations. How should we handle this, what should we do, so it sounds like she's really been a great asset so far.
That's good.
Yeah, yeah, so, it's funded for two years, and I guess, you know, she's gonna collect the data, there it is. That's all I got.
Yeah, a few people asking about the EMS goal, clarification on. You know, different things about the tax portion of it. I don't know that it'll be on the, it'll be not on the assessed value of property, but on the taxable value, your, your valuation. They understood that, and they wanted to know what it means if it didn't pass. That would happen, so, some scenarios with that.
I had an economic development meeting last Tuesday, uh, Marines got nobody left working anymore, Linda retired too. She's gonna retire, I should think, she has, so, you know if anybody needs a. Job. They're looking for somebody, uh, not a lot, lot new at economic development. No gas station for sure. Uh, went to Lone Rock one night with the EMS, um, pretty good attendance. Went to Fenton the next night, and there was. Quite a few at Fenton more than Lone Rock, I think he said there's like eighteen at Fenton, but they kinda take care of Lone Rock. And Lead Yard, Lead Yard had twelve, fourteen there, and they have no EMS at all right now. Lot of good discussion, lot of questions. Tonight, is Elgona again?
Yes, yeah.
And tomorrow night is Burt?
And I think that'll be done then, right?
Then I think we're done. So, if you're bored. Come to Elgona. Last time Elgona, we had three people there, I think, aren't too concerned. The old UBC building, um, the other thing is Mark sent an email out, if you wanna meet with. Turnkey Logistics on the Summit Carbon Pipeline, if you wanna meet with them sometime, there's a question on an email. Talked to Margie, set up a time.
Oh, and I did get a call yesterday morning. That pit must be really stinking again, if you notice that, or she don't go that way anymore.
You got a detour, I don't go that way anymore, but I did hear, the other day I talked to somebody over there.
Either Sunday, it was no smell.
This person said it's worse than it's ever been.
Uh, Sunday, Sunday, of course it warmed up, so it sounded too, so it could have came on yesterday.
I heard they turned it back over to. We get that gal that.
EPA or the DNR, they're not gonna touch it.
Well, the one lady that gave us the runaround that day.
Yeah, you got it?
They get that very bladder.
Well, that's not good.
No, it's not good at all.
Oh, and I did, uh, I did forget to mention that the hazmat guy talked about electric fire truck, when we were talking about CO2 pipeline. Two million dollars.
Fire truck, yeah, that just sounds funny to me, I'm sorry.
Totally said.
Almost a bunch of.
At least we have a charge location to tell them.
Yeah, and then you'll have a long fire that.
Have to bring a portable generator up to charge it.
Yeah, you'll bring a diesel generator out to charge it up when the fire lasts more than two hours.
Got a department head meeting on Thursday? Anything you want brought up at department head meeting? And safety meeting on Friday, if you wanna go. The first.
Friday, oh, so this is.
Thursday, morning?
Yep, at nine o'clock.
Anything else become for the good of Cassis County?
Is there, I was just thinking this, is there any way to share some of this out, like the fact that they say no modem detected? Some of this other stuff, I mean.
Well, whoever else on the tape is very good, though.
Well, yeah, but is there anything else we could do as far as radio or anything like that?
Well, she said that she'd be willing to get us something in writing if we wanted to.
Like a press release type thing?
Well, no, not a press release, because they're just the company that makes them, so, um. But, I mean, she could give us something that, that we could hand out.
Or if somebody called in, you could say, hey, can we value?
Yeah, that's, that's what I was thinking, just have.
Sometimes the more you put out, the more you're gonna get questioned.
Yeah, then you sound like there's something going on.
Yeah.
Yeah, but she did say that she could, we're also thinking about doing a Facebook page, because the Secretary of State's Office has weekly. Information that they send us, that you can put Twitter, Facebook, your Facebook page, whatever, we don't use any of those, because. Told not to, that it wasn't a good idea, but now they're recommending that we do, so we can get out more information, so I don't know, I haven't. Still thinking about that, I don't know what to do about that.
You got a website already, just put it on there.
Yeah.
They don't have, the stuff that they send us isn't for the website, it's for like social media.
Do you have a motion to adjourn? Motion by class, second by law?
Yep.
Casey, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried, we are adjourned.
Are you still recording, Kyle?
Yeah, I'm gonna get to it here in a second.
Yeah.
I just wanted to step the light on.